I'd like to call a meeting to order of the regular planning commission meeting of Wednesday, December 6, 2017. With that, Mr. Tally will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city planner please call the roll?
Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Mr. Tally.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Wu.
Here.
To let the record show that Commissioner Smith, Randall, and Wuhan are not present.
And through the record, please introduce the city attorney for this evening, please.
Yes, tonight we have special counsel, Alan Burns, and I'll let him take a second to introduce himself. You just have to turn your light on, Alan.
There you go. Thank you. Hi, Chairman Brown and members of the commission. I've been before you before, and it's nice to see you again tonight. I'll be handling the matter of giving you advice on the environmental impact report, the SEP, and the discretionary sign permit because due to a conflict of your city attorney's office. Thank you.
And so you've studied all the materials required to give us advice. Is that correct?
I have.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think the mic's on.
Actually, maybe I'm not speaking.
It gets closer to it then. Okay, we have no special orders of business tonight. The first issue is the minutes, and we need to approve the minutes from the regular study session of the planning commission meeting of November 8, 2017. Do I have any comments or a motion to approve?
I have a comment. I'll have to recuse from those because I was celebrating my anniversary. Does that leave you with enough to pass?
I guess we can't with three to approve. No, we don't. Okay, so we can't approve the minutes tonight. So then we will defer the minute approval of the planning session and the regular planning commission meeting of November 8 till the next meeting. Wherein we communication, members of the audience may address the commission on matters of the public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on our agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentation. Please limit your presentations to three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have any cards for anything that are not on our agenda tonight? With that, we'll move on. There are no items on our consent calendar tonight, and so we'll go into the public hearing process with a time limit for the applicants of approximately 10 minutes and all other speakers, three minutes. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public has asked to limit their individual presentations to three minutes. Please, following the closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. Item 88 and Item 111 West Avenida Vista Hermosa, sign exception permit 15-423, and amendment to discretionary sign permit 05-176. Outlets at San Clemente freeway oriented signs. Ms. Vasquez, how are you today?
I'm great. How is everyone?
Mr. Chair, could I make an overview statement before Planner Vasquez makes a statement?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. This is an overview to what you're doing tonight and the law. So as I've advised you, I'm advising the council tonight because of a conflict situation. Before you tonight are three items: a draft supplemental EIR, an amendment discretionary sign permit, and a sign exception permit. The matter comes before you after a long and tortuous course. The matter is before you as a result of a 2008 writ of mandate which commanded the city to set aside its approval of freeway oriented signs because there had not been adequate environmental review of those signs. The city has chosen to conduct a supplemental EIR to address the freeway oriented sign issues. That decision was a city's to make, although the applicant would have preferred some form of exemption or lesser sequo review take place. That was the city's decision, and that's what we are doing tonight. Throughout the evening, you will be receiving evidence related to the environmental review and also to support or oppose the findings required for the discretionary sign permit and the sign exception permit. The applicant is entitled to apply for a sign exception permit for freeway oriented signs, although those are now banned. The applicant is entitled to apply for those signs because it has a vested right to the ordinances that were existing at the time the development agreement was entered into. While the applicant is entitled to the rights under those ordinances, the rights to signs is not absolute, but the applicant must meet the criteria in the ordinances. The applicant agreed to do so in 1999. You should also keep in mind that the criteria for environmental review and the criteria for findings for the signs are separate. It is possible to find no significant environmental impact but still find that the signs are inappropriate under your San Clemente municipal code criteria. The planning commission can make judgments about such things as whether the project is consistent with the Spanish village-by-the-sea concept, even though that is a vague concept. The same is also true that the city could find that there will be a significant environmental impact, yet approve the project by making a statement of overriding interest, so overriding consideration. So you have two criteria you're applying tonight. Of course, you're only making recommendations on the signs and reviewing a draft supplemental environmental impact report. The final decisions will be made by the city council, and all comments made tonight on the environmental report will be responded to at a later date. You've already been provided with review materials submitted by staff and the applicant, and we only suggest that we may be making some suggestions based on the Landham Act to make a few adjustments to those. So otherwise, this is a quasi judiciary hearing, and you should disclose any ex parte contacts or site visits you may have made. You should also limit your decision to the evidence produced at the hearing tonight. And thank you, unless there are any other questions. That is my overview of the hearing tonight.
Are any questions of the overview from the commission? If not, Ms. Vasquez.
Thank you so much. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Amy Vasquez. I'm here this evening to present item 8A. It's a request by the outlets of San Clemente to allow freeway oriented signs. The project is located at 101 West Avenida Vista Hermosa. It is within the regional commercial zoning district of the Marblehead coastal specific plan. It is the only regional commercial city within the city. The intent of the zoning district is to create a meaningful tax base for the city, a place for land uses that are appropriate to freeway accessibility, and establish an outstanding image for San Clemente and surrounding uses. There are two actions before the commission this evening. The first is an amendment to the discretionary sign permit, and the second is a sign exception permit to allow freeway oriented signs, signs to exceed 64 square feet and signs to exceed one square foot per linear foot of building frontage. In order to approve the request, specific findings must be made. These findings are detailed in your staff report, but in summary, the commission must find consistency with the general plan and the Marblehead specific plan, must find that there are unique circumstances that pertain to the property, and that there would be no inverse impacts related to traffic, light, glare, or noise. In February of 2007, the city council approved a sign exception permit with two resolutions. One resolution pertained to the interior signs, and the other was for the freeway oriented signs. On June 24 of 2008, the Orange County Superior Court ordered the city to set aside its approval for the freeway oriented sign portion of the project. This was based on the court's determination that the city did not complete an adequate California Environmental Quality Act review. So on July 15 of 2008, the city council rescinded its approval of Resolution Number 7-11 with respect to the freeway oriented signs. The freeway oriented signs are categorized as either tenant signs, outlet identification signs, or hotel identification signs. The 25 tenant signs shown in green on this slide are proposed to be located on the northeast, east, and south elevations of the outlet buildings. Sign locations would not necessarily correspond with the location of the tenants. The sign program stipulates that 10 of the 14 locations shown on the east elevation would only be the locations for signs. The applicant is proposing tenant signs ranging in size from 31.5 square feet to 127.5 square feet. The signs would be individual pin-mounted letters with halo illumination in order to enhance the Spanish colonial revival architecture. The applicant is also proposing signs with the name of the center, Outlets at San Clemente. Two of the signs would be located on a 42-foot-tall icon tower located at the northeast corner of the property. The signs on the tower would be 100 square feet and would be located on the northwest and southwest elevations of the tower. Staff is recommending conditions of approval that the base of this tower be fully landscaped and that the two elevations without signs be enhanced with architectural detail. The two additional identification signs are proposed on the elevations of the building. One would be located on the east, and the other would be on the northeast corner. These signs would be 200 square feet. The applicant is also proposing five hotel identification signs. All of the signs are less than 64 square feet, which is in compliance with the code with regard to size. These signs will also be pin-mounted and halo illuminated. The purpose of the draft supplemental environmental impact report is to evaluate the potential impacts resulting from the implementation of freeway oriented signs. The SEIR evaluated environmental impacts and concerns related to aesthetics, biological resources, land use and planning, and traffic. The SEIR indicated that the project could result in a significant impact with regard to aesthetics by degrading the existing visual character or quality of the site. This was based on the implementation of the color palette alternatives. There was also a project alternative proposed that would result in a reduction of the impacts to a level that is less than significant. The proposed alternative provided a basis for staff's recommendation of reducing the number and the size of the signs and limiting the color palette. It's important to note that the SEIR is in the public review period until January 5. Comments from the community and local and state agencies will be carefully analyzed prior to city council action. Staff has carefully analyzed the required findings and the environmental document. We are supportive of the applicant's request to have freeway oriented signs, but we're recommending the following modifications. We believe that only 17 signs shall be displayed along the freeway. Along the east elevation, we believe that only 10 signs shall be permitted. The tenant signs shall be limited to 64 square feet with no more than 10 square feet per linear feet of building frontage. We are supportive of the hotel signs with the exception of the varied color palette. Staff also believes that the hotel identification signage -- oh, pardon me, that the outlet identification signage is appropriate to identify the location of the center, but we're not supportive of tenants being located on the icon tower. We believe that all of the freeway oriented signs should be limited to the dark bronze color. So that concludes our presentation, and Amber Gregg and I are both available for questions. The applicant's consultant team, as well as our environmental consultant, is also here this evening for any technical questions. I'd also like to put in the record that I did pass out a modification to condition number 14, just making the condition a bit more detailed so you understand exactly what our recommendation is this evening.
And we did have a -- we did receive it on the desk. Thank you. Does the commission have any questions of staff presentation at this time? Yes, Mr. Tally.
I have a quick question on the draft supplemental environmental impact report. Can you walk me through, in short order, how we should analyze and weigh disagreements between experts and what constitutes an expert?
Do you want to go?
I don't know, maybe our environmental consultant could help with that?
We can't bring the environmental consultant off, but what we say is when you have two conflicting experts, the city staff has reviewed the -- and our consultants have reviewed what the experts have put before them, and so you can have disagreements in experts, but the peer review of those documents have been done. And so the -- I don't want to say the burden, but the favor lies with the city in that regard when we're talking about experts on that. And I'll defer to the attorney to elaborate on that if he has anything to add.
I really don't -- you can choose to rely on either of the experts as long as your decision is based on substantial evidence, meaning that which a reasonable person would rely on in their personal business dealings. So if you find either one to be more persuasive, you're entitled to rely on that when there's a dispute.
So it's our obligation to, I guess, investigate the expert's qualification when those statements are made to us, which I think in the majority of these documents we have, you know, their CV or other qualifications. We should look to that.
You certainly should, could, yes.
Okay.
Yes. I think staff's telling you that they have done that, and their recommendation to you is the fact they've done that for you, and they're making a recommendation, but you certainly exercise your independent judgment.
Okay.
It's based on the peer review they've already done internally.
And in addition, Commissioner Tally, this was also sent up to the State Clearing House, so state agencies and local agencies who are interested in the document can also provide comment.
Yep. In fact, I think we have some of those in the technicals.
I saw some of those in the appendix.
Any other question there, Mr. Tally? Commissioner Wu, you have.
Yeah, I have a quick question, too. In your recommendation, you responded to applicant's request to have the freeway oriented signs. You responded to whether they should have signs exceeding 64 square feet, but you did not explicitly respond to the request to have more than 1.0 square foot of sign area per linear foot of building frontage. Can you clarify that?
Yeah, that's completely accurate, Commissioner Wu, and the reason is it's kind of implied that if the signs are less than 64 square feet, then they also comply with the one square feet per linear foot of building frontage.
Okay. Thanks.
Excuse me, I don't have a hearing problem.
Commissioner Powell.
But I'm having -- I can hear her really well, but I'm having a hard time hearing all of the people up there. Most of the mic's not in place.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
I said it very hard to hear you.
I apologize. My question to the staff planner is that in the staff's recommendation, the recommendation did not respond to the applicant's request to exceed 1.0 square foot of sign area per one linear foot of building frontage. I ask her to clarify that. You're welcome.
Okay, Commissioner Tally back.
Sorry, I have one more. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. I have one more question on the background. In regards to the court's order rescinding, I believe it was ordinance 0711.
Yes.
In rescinding that, which I believe the council did with ordinance number 08-78 in July of 2008, did that, by its definition, also rescind the findings that the city council made because those findings relied upon the sequo -- the sequo or lack of sequo review?
Well, the -- those were resolutions that were rescinded, not ordinances, and by invalidating the resolution that approved the SEP, it sent it back so that you would make -- obviously you need to make findings with regard to the environmental, so you have a clean slate to go back and make your environmental review now because it was not an environmental review of the freeway oriented signs.
So we're not in any way obligated or bound by those decisions that were since rescinded by the city council?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that.
Okay. But we do -- I do want to confirm that we still are bound by the ordinance that was in effect of 5 August 1998 when the development agreement was signed. Is that correct?
That's correct. They're entitled to that ordinance package that was in existence at that time if they make the findings.
Very good. Any other questions of staff or the consultant, the EIR consultant, or anyone else that has been forward? Thank you. With that time, we'll now open up the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve Knoblauch, House Counsel with the Craig Realty Group. Because we have a limited amount of time to present a lot of information, just let me introduce Louis Triony. He'll be speaking about the application, the sign-related issues. Chris Garrett will be speaking about the EIR-related issues and prior findings as the question was just asked. And we'll -- we also have a number of experts here for aesthetics, traffic, lighting. We suspect there'll be comments rather than burn up our 10 minutes with that. It's in the staff information.
Turn it up now. Let's get going.
Well, we want to have them available. We also have exhibits in the back of the actual signed letter that will be --
Thank you.
So Louis, credit.
Good evening, Commissioner. Louis Triony, project architect, designer of the outlet center, and the signed package is before you. I want to thank the DRSE members that helped us, guided us through the process. I mean, we've been at this for two years in the last round of the development of the package, and their input has been very valuable because we think we've refined it and made it much more elegant, much more in keeping with the spirit of what the ordinance is about for the signage and the intent of what the development agreement is. The important thing to remember about the general plan is that the site was chosen as a regional center to enhance the economic base of the city, to improve the quality of life through economic growth, is what the general plan says. So it's important to remember that the signs are critical to the success of the project and the sales tax base because the signage expands the knowledge of everyone passing by, of the tenant brands are there, and that's what really drives customers to shop. And as we can tell by the temporary signs that were in place, the sales have gone up with each of those individual tenants dramatically. The moment, the day that those signs went up, the economic base of those tenant sales changed dramatically. So we appreciate that opportunity to have the temporary signs. On the -- I just wanted to talk a little bit about the size issue of the 1.5 square feet. The specific plan recognized the fact that the buildings for the outlet center were going to be larger and allowed the opportunity for us to ask for larger signs. In contrast, most of the commercial buildings in town are 50% shorter and smaller in scale than the outlet project. So the scale of the signs is -- So the scale of the signs is somewhat proportional to the buildings, very proportionate in terms of what we have on the inside of the signs, of the center. And we've limited the size and how those are related to the facades by breaking down the building down into smaller pieces. The color, as we presented this DRSC, was, we wanted a range of colors so that it didn't look monotonous. So we had a broad range of bronze shades to allow a lot of variety, even though it's a similar color, it doesn't look like everything is the same, and it doesn't have that monotonous sort of quality of a generic program. So we would appreciate if you'd consider the range of color still. On the tower icon, originally that tower had five tenant signs and one project identification sign. It was much larger, it's been reduced, the quantities have been reduced, and we asked that you consider the only other sign on that tower besides the outlet identification is for the theater, which is normally not a component associated with an outlet center, and therefore would not have representation as it should as a large component of the project. So we asked that you reconsider that. We did refine the tower and the design of it through the DRSC based on your comments, so we would appreciate if you'd reconsider that component of it. Any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions of the architect? Mr. Tally.
Mr. Blackwell.
Oh, Mr. Blackwell, I'm sorry.
It's regarding the theater sign. Has that been reviewed by staff in terms of review of its design placement?
Placement has. I mean, basically, it's on the tower. It's smaller than the project ID sign, which is really what we had discussed in our DRSC meetings. The actual logo is not a part of it, we don't have the brand of the tenant or the name determined yet, so it will conform. And it's also halo lit and whatever the color we decide.
Mr. Tally.
Yes, I have two questions. The first was in response to your statement that in the development standards within the Marblehead Coastal Development Plan that signage was critical. I reviewed that, and there's about four or five pages that deal with what is critical and what is important and what is memorialized there. And signage, especially freeway-oriented signage, appears to be de minimis. In fact, I don't see any reference to freeway-oriented signage. I see reference to signage facing inward on the plaza. So I'm trying to reconcile your statement with what is in front of me.
The general plan, the Centennial General Plan from 2014, has much language about economic development and talks about the fact that you need the components, and this project was the economic engine to provide a sales tax base for the city. The location of the project was chosen to locate it.
We're talking about siding from there.
Against the freeway, for the scale and the visibility of that project to attract regional customer base.
So my question, then, the following question would be, do we want to use the standards from 2014, or do we want to use the standards that I've seen all of my documents talk about, which are from 1998, for making the critical signage argument?
Well, I believe the '98 specific plan is the specific plan.
Okay.
It talks about signage. The '98 EIR was thrown out, so there's obviously an evolution of the project. '98 also had a general plan that talked about the economic significance of having a basis through a regional shopping center. And to have a project like this, you have to identify it in many ways, not just through an outlet moniker.
Okay. My second question was, you made a statement that the days the signs went up on the temporary signs, the sales increased dramatically. Can you provide that data to us?
We can. I don't have the specific numbers, but I know that in many cases, it's well over twenty percent.
In many cases, do we have an idea of how many stores that represents?
I believe we have at least twelve, Amber, temporary identification signs?
Seventeen.
And all seventeen of those tenants saw sales increase?
We can probably graph it for you and show you the dramatic difference, yes.
I'd like to see that from the day they went out, if we're going to make that statement.
Okay, so.
Okay, that's all I have.
I think you made the statement that EIR was thrown out. I think the EIR, from the original EIR for the outdoor stands, it just, it wasn't considered complete enough for freeway signs.
Correct.
That's correct. That's why he handles the architecture and I handle the legal.
Okay. Any other questions of the architect? Okay, the next lady in waiting, please.
I see that there's about three and a half minutes left. It'll be difficult for me to finish with the time, but I'll try to do my best.
Okay.
We'll give you four or five minutes for the questions.
All right, I'll do my best.
Sure.
Tell me to shut up when you want me to shut up. I'll try to be as courteous as I can. We have sitting in the audience, I know someone's interested in experts and their expertise. We have Kyle Mayberry, who from Traffic, from Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan. Mike Singleton, Visual, from K2UA, who's a visual expert. Rick Tavares, who's an expert in photo, photometrics, lighting, impacts, and aesthetics from ISE. He's in the audience as well. And then Taika Takahashi from my office, who's an expert on SEQA issues. All three, all four of them are here, they're available to answer questions if you have them. We think they're all recognized experts, and we actually commend the staff for accepting input from those experts as part of the preparation of the EIR. We don't agree on everything, but we were able to provide a lot of expertise, and we do agree that you have the chance to weigh different experts. At this point, these are the experts that you have, and I'd encourage you to ask them questions directly rather than listen to me about it. I do want to make a fundamental point about SEQA that I'm not sure that your attorney underscored. He's free to clean up after me and say what's wrong and what's right about what I said, but a fundamental point under SEQA is that you are looking at the impacts of the project added to the existing environment. You have to do a plan-to-ground analysis, that's what we're all taught in SEQA school. It's not plan-to-plan. So the city could have an aspirational goal of changing the environment, doing something different, you know, getting rid of all commercial, getting rid of all signs, getting rid of all freeway signs, but that's not the baseline, that's an aspirational plan, it's not the current environment. The current environment you have out there today, you can drive up and down the freeway, you can see all the freeway signs, you can see the inward-facing signs and the colors that are already illuminated and in the existing center. And so your question from a SEQA perspective, and I'm just talking about SEQA, and hopefully Mr. Burns will endorse this, is not what you want the environment to be, but rather is what's being proposed different from the existing environment in such a way that it would trigger one of the significant impact levels that are set forth in their criteria for doing that. So it's our point that there's a wide variety of existing signs, you can drive up and down the freeway now, different colors, lighting, everything else, and there are also colors and signs facing inward. The signs that we're proposing are equivalent in the same in style and color, and they're smaller and actually better built, I believe, and maybe nicer looking than a number of the signs. I love the Ralphs one, I think, for example. I'm a frequent stopper along the freeway there. So I just want to make that basic point. Now, your staff has sort of mixed and matched environmental issues from what your planning, goals, and rights are. And in theory, writing from a clean slate, you had no general plan, you have no development agreement, you have no ordinance on the books, and you could decide as a city, you want to shift things. You want to shift from a situation where you allow variegated colors to monotonous and single colors. You could do all that if you weren't constrained, first of all, by, that's not a SEQA issue, that's changing things so that it looks different than the rest of the signs that you have in the city. Secondly, your ordinance has very, uses the word colors in very limited places that otherwise talks about material, size, and design, and the staff recommendation that you have today is untethered by any reference to any phrase in the ordinance that you're supposed to be applying as to when and how you have the right or ability to measure colors. And I would also say that to the extent, you're also limited by the interpretation and the history of the ordinance that you have, and that that ordinance has been interpreted for many years by the city, to not give the city the power to require a monotonous or single color for particular development, and it's our view that a monotonous or single color for the project is in conflict with a number of the general plan policies that are cited in your staff report, which talk about consistency with existing commercial development. And so we actually think that by making this change, it's not a SEQA issue, so it's not compelled by SEQA, number one. Number two, it doesn't fit within the regulations and requirements of your sign ordinance, which talks about when you can command people to change colors and when you can't. And to the extent that you want to change the colors from what we proposed because of alleged consistency with existing development or consistency with the Spanish style of architecture, those consistency decisions have already been made in the approvals that have already been granted for this project and in the prior interpretation of the ordinance. I would defy the staff to find a single example in the whole history of while the ordinance has been in place that the city has ever required a commercial establishment with several different tenants to use a single monotonous color, since that's never been done before. We don't think you're interpreting the ordinance, you're interpreting something else. We have a development agreement, and you're supposed to be interpreting the ordinance that was vested under the development agreement. I see my time's run out, I'm just not going to take advantage of any further time on this. I did want to make a single point, there was a lot of discussion about what the range and scope of what you're required to do is, and you've already had hearings and appeals and things like that. I did want to point out to you, you have in the staff report the judge's order. It's in one of your attachments, I believe it's attachment thirteen, and my last point, just look, take a look at the second page where the judge said that what the city was supposed to do was set aside the decision approving the freeway-oriented signage portion of the sign exception permit, 06402, in resolution number 0711 dated on or about February 20, 2007. So that's what the judge said to set aside. It's not all the findings, all the resolutions, it's not the prior EIR, as the chair pointed out, it's simply the sign exception permit. Now, you've already made some decisions in this regard, but I think it's a mistake for you to be making decisions today under the impression that the sign, master sign program was thrown out, the other sign approvals were there, it's only what the judge ordered here. We just had a recent case where the courts upheld and said a remedy under a SEQA case can be very limited to one specific thing that's overturned. The entire project is not thrown out. This is the second district's decision in New Hall Ranch that came out a week ago, where the court judges said it's just one single thing. Now, maybe the court was wrong in having this one single limited thing here, and maybe the council did the wrong thing when they passed the resolution that they did, only setting aside this one thing. But I think the time to argue about that has passed, and if you're being told today that what you're going to do instead is, it reopens everything, all the findings have been thrown out, all the decisions you made about the signs that have been built are now open to question again, whether or not there can be freeway-oriented signs to begin with, I'm not seeing, I'm not thinking that you're giving the best advice from folks, but obviously you have to get advice from the city advisors to do that. We'd like to not see a monotonous color scheme. We actually think that will be distracting for traffic experts. I am not a traffic expert. Our traffic expert has not been asked this question, but if you ask me, as I'm driving south from LA desperately in need of my caffeine at about eight o'clock at night, and I'm looking for Starbucks, if I look up and I see bronze letters that say Starbucks, I'm not really sure that that's a real Starbucks. I'm going to be squinting at that, and I'm not going to be keeping my eye on the freeway.
Strap it up, please.
Thank you.
With the Assistant City Attorney, tear to comment on that last issue.
No, I don't have much disagreement with what was just said, but I certainly would say that the sign exception permit was invalidated and, because there was no environmental review. You have to do environmental review, and after you do your environmental review, you would then approve a new sign exception permit. To do that, you have to make findings, and I think you have to make those findings over again. You don't say, well, all the findings have already been made, we're just, this is just a shadow play. We don't really have a role here, let's just do an environmental review, tell us when you're done with it, and then we'll just restamp the old, everything that was done before. I think you have a real decision to make here.
Same with the master sign permit also.
Well, the master sign program, to the extent it approved or had the freeway-oriented signs, yes. I mean, there may be some viability of that with the interior signs, but to the extent it dealt with the sign exception permit, then yes, that part can't, you can't have that stand and then say, well, we don't, this sign exception permit is really...
You have to amend the master sign permit. In fact, you can then deal with the sign exception permit, is that correct?
Yeah, one can't be subsumed within the other so that it makes everything we're doing tonight just superfluous or irrelevant, so, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Chair Brown.
Commissioner Tally, and then followed by Commissioner Blackwell.
I just would like to piggyback on that topic. It's specifically on findings that we're looking at now. So we're talking about a point in time, once upon a time, there was an ordinance in place when this project was approved, and there were certain provisions within that ordinance that this project adhered to. So we're keeping that in mind, but we're making findings today. The findings that we're making today, just to be clear, are based on the code at that time and cannot be compared to provisions within the code today, correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
It is correct. Mr. Tally.
Counsel, I've got a question for you in regards to the rescission or the court's order on 0711. What do you think, I'm looking at resolution 711 right now, and I also read the court's minute order, which, as you know, is probably a little bit more detailed than the final order that came out. What do you think the court was ordering the city to do? Because I'm looking at section two of resolution 0711, which has a parenthetical freeway-oriented signs, which then consumes, you know, letters A through G before you get to section three.
Well, I disagree with you. I think the controlling thing is what the judge ultimately issued. I frequently have a judge who enters a minute order, comes up with decisions, and the parties have to get together and agree on a final order that's issued by the court. And it's the final order that's issued by the court, then that takes control over what the judge might have said at one particular time or another. So what I interpret the judge's order to mean is that exactly what the order says, which is to set aside the decision approving the freeway-oriented signage portion of the sign exception permit in the resolution. So I don't see that as saying that other things are set aside, such as the master sign program, or that the city is authorized to reopen the approved master sign program and change it to something else. And certainly, I mean, that's what it said, and, you know, we'll go back to court to do that, but whether or not it gave the city broader discretion or not, I think the city's still bound by certain decisions that it made at that time that are definitely in place, like the interior signs. The city did find that those were consistent with the sign ordinance, that they were consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, that they're consistent with the general plan. And I don't, I would disagree with Mr. Burns that somehow that's annulity. If the city has found that those signs and those colors are consistent with Spanish architecture, with the approvals and everything else, I don't think the city can turn around on the other side of the building and now say, certain signs are not consistent with it, because that would just be irrational.
One question, yeah, Commissioner Wu.
Yeah, I have a question for our special city council regarding the color. A lot of time, there's a trademark, and sometimes a color is a trademark. For example, Tiffany, turquoise color is their trademark color. So in that case, how much police power does the city have to regulate them? Because one email, one letter we received is from attorney from Landham, and they raised that constitutionality issue. Can you educate us about that?
I think we do have to look at some Landham Act issues as to those national trademark logos, but we'll make some adjustments, I guess, when it goes up to the city council on that. I think there could be an issue worth looking at about that.
Will you repeat that, please?
There could be an issue about, we have to go back and look at whether or not there's a national, an infringement of a national service mark and make any adjustments that we may need to make if there's a violation of that. So that is something we will...
In regards to color?
Yes, yeah.
Because there's signs around town here that represent certain national logos, but they have agreed to color changes.
And we'll be looking at that, too. Whether it can be agreed, we can't require it. We can ban the sign or say you can't have that sign, but we can't make them alter a national service mark. So that's what we're going to be looking at when...
From both shape, form, fit, function, and color?
Possibly, yes.
Possibly?
Yeah.
Can you define it better than possibly?
Color, yes. Yes. Answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the extra time, I appreciate it.
Oh, you have another question of the applicant?
I just have a question about, about the, I guess, specimen in the back. Is that the, is that the intensity of the light that will be displayed?
It's actually representative exactly of the light, the color, the intensity, the reverse channel halo, it's two inches off the background panel. That is exactly how each of the letters would be constructed and illuminated.
And what degree Kelvin is that emanating at?
Four thousand, that's the pure white that we altered based on Commissioner Wu's suggestion to warm it up.
But that's the intensity?
That is it.
Okay.
All consistent.
So a question for, for the architect, or whomever is able to answer. So at the September 27th Design Review Subcommittee meeting, there was a discussion, and it's in the record here, about the lumens of the lighting. And the recommendation was made to the applicant to demonstrate that it would be, and I'll read it, "So the applicant should provide planning commission with evidence from a lighting expert that 4,000 lumens, rather than 3,000 lumens standard, is appropriate." Now, how many lumens is that?
That's the 4,000.
That's the 4,000.
It's degrees Kelvin, which is a color temperature, it's not lumens.
Okay. So that's the 4,000. That's what you're currently--
That's correct. Normally, a 6,000, the one that was originally proposed is a much bluer, whiter, whiter light. It's much harsher. This is softer and more in keeping with the other lights that are on the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any more questions of the applicant or any of their technical consultants as far as, in regards to the supplemental EIR, traffic, noise, aesthetic biology, and that like that? Christopher Blackwell?
Yes. And so the majority of this point may be more of a discussion component. However, we've already started the discussion on icon color.
Well--
Sign color.
Just, we're not discussing, we're just asking questions of the applicant or clarification from the city attorney.
So to legal and staff, this might be something worth discussing with the applicant in terms of, you know, promise or the applicant's willingness to adhere to a certain color palette. Right now, we're talking about four colors versus one. There's really no discussion about a green or a red within that palette at all. So it's really a non-issue at this point. Is that correct? Or could they come back later and want to change it and force their right?
You know, I haven't been involved in those discussions, so maybe Amber or Cecilia could be better equipped to answer that question.
So if I understand your question correctly, you're asking about what's being proposed. And currently, what's being proposed is there is a, a color palette made up of a numerous number of colors on there. They're all a metallic, typically darker in shade, and then the applicant is also requesting for four color exemptions. They've given examples of what those color exemptions are, but they're preserving the right that it has to be approved by staff finally. I do want to make a point, though, that on the east elevation, the applicant is proposing to have a single color, and that's the bronze color. When I say east elevation, that's elevation that parallels the freeway. So I want to make sure that that's clear also. I don't know if I've answered your question, but I just wanted to get that on there. So if there's a part I did not answer, please let me know.
No, you did. Great job. There's just the, the second part of that, and that is that currently there's no proposal for a green Starbucks sign in the package, for example.
No, there's not.
Right. So it becomes a non-issue really at this point. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff or, you have another one?
I've got a couple.
Oh, of the applicant or staff?
Both.
Okay, Mr. Tally? Let's start with the staff.
All right. So I just want to make sure I, I understand, under the, the 1999 law that was in effect, I guess 1998, that was in effect, in order to have a freeway-oriented sign, you have to receive a sign exception permit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And in order to have a sign that is greater than 64 square feet, you have to have a sign exception permit?
That's correct.
The design guidelines that were put in place with the Marblehead specific plan states that signs, when they're talking about commercial centers, they use the language "may include" logos. Is that--
That's correct.
But that is, and maybe the city attorney can opine on that, there is a difference between "may" granting and then "shall" granting a right. That, that confers discretion. Am I correct in reading that?
Yes. You're correct in your understanding of the difference between "may" and "shall," permissive versus mandatory.
Okay. And this was in effect at the time that the developer signed their development agreement with us. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So they had knowledge of that permissive activity that the legislative body in the City of San Clemente could, could take, which was, there is discretion. Is that also correct?
That's correct.
I've got more questions, sorry. Actually, this question is for council, for the outlets. Sir, I, I've got--
You're right.
Oh, no, I got a question for you.
I didn't know if the last one was addressed to me, but the reference to "may" was that the developer may include a logo if they want. That's, that's how we interpret it.
Okay. I understand your interpretation. My question for you was, in some of the, in this letter that we received from, I believe it was Takahashi?
Yes.
Mr. Takah, is he's an attorney with your firm?
Yes. He's right here in the audience, and I have the letter in front of me.
Okay. So on page 10 of the letter, and I believe this, this is referenced in multiple alternative discourse, there is a statement on here that alternative number one reneges on previous assurances from the city council that the outlets would not be deprived of its vested rights to freeway signage. So on July 7, 1999, the council made assurances that the applicant will not be precluded from utilizing freeway-oriented signs. And, and then there's some more language that goes after that. I'm sure you're looking at that there. Was that codified with the resolution?
Well, the council took final action based on the compromise that was offered up at the meeting. That's right. I don't believe the resolution recited what Mr. Craig said, and I don't believe that the resolution that the council adopted explicitly stated that it was a result of the compromise between the applicant and the city, so--
Is this the letter that we received several days ago electronically?
It was.
That has concerns about alternative one, the no-build option, is analyzed in the supplemental EIR?
It does.
Because, as I recall, my SEQA 101, and having reviewed several in the last seven years, including a couple freeway projects, the no-build automate option is a requirement SEQA 2 analyzes one of the options. Is that correct? Because every EIR I have reviewed in seven and a half years, one of the options that analyzes is the do-nothing option, the no-build option. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. And if, I don't, I'm not sure if this is directly related, but the, when there's a discussion about the applicant was guaranteed the freeway signs, the, what the statement made in the 1999 minutes was that Mr. Craig stated he is willing to accept a condition that indicates that the freeway-oriented signage, i.e. three freestanding signs as well as wall signage, is not approved, and requiring that such signage be approved through an amendment to SEP 99.18. So in 1999, there's minutes that he agreed to a sign exception permit, and he knew there's a process to go through, which includes making findings. And I think in his deposition, he admitted that he remembered that, too.
Okay.
I don't know if that answers the question or not.
That helps.
That does.
Commissioner Crandall, we, we agree the no-project alternative needed to be--
Mr. Crandall's not in attendance tonight.
I'm sorry. Chairman Brown?
Much better effort.
Okay, thanks. We, I'm sorry if our letter wasn't clear. We agree the EIR should have the no-project alternative in it.
Well, the letter I received electronically that I think he's citing there made great, the concerns about the no-build option, which kind of, to me, showed some kind of a naivete about the SEQA process and the requirements of the certain options you have to look at. It was not impressed, in other words.
Respectfully, it doesn't say, we agree it should have been in the EIR. In fact, we've talked to your staff about having it in there. The point of the letter was to say, when you describe it, one of the things you need to talk about is the feasibility of it, and it's not legally feasible. But an alternative, an EIR is supposed to contain a discussion of all kinds of alternatives, including this one. So if, if the letter indicated to you that we didn't want that alternative in the EIR, the letter's wrong, and I apologize.
Thank you. You, you have more questions?
I have one, one last question. It was really--
Till next time.
Keep going, you're out of the roll.
No, no. My, my question was concerning Dr. Taylor from Villanova University, who I continue to lose in the March Madness pool for Villanova, on some of the, the signage, the signage comments that were made. And I guess I was, I was having problems reconciling the, enhancing the image of a store or business, which seemed to be relied upon, because it said that, and I'm quoting here, but the, the expensive signage in conjunction with an elegant storefront was one of the, was one of the reinforcements that was used to talk about why you needed to have signage, when by my understanding, the signage here is going to be somewhat disaggregated from where the stores are actually located, meaning that I could have a sign for, say, we'll use Starbucks again, on the far, on the far corner, that is not geographically proximate to where the actual location of the store is itself. So, so can you, can somebody walk me through, through that?
Well, we didn't, we didn't ask the professor to come out from Villanova for the meeting today, so he's one of the experts we didn't ask to come. So otherwise, I think he could answer. But I think the discussion really relates to the concept of a factory outlet center, which is the idea that people can go there and get brand name goods, rather than it being a discount or dollar store type operation. And the quality of the sign indicates, to some extent, that it's actually a brand name, not a knockoff, for example. So you, and people are familiar with stores, strip malls in other cities and things where knockoffs are sold, or stores seem to imitate others, may be familiar with that phenomenon, China, where people try to imitate the Apple stores. As to the, the way the signs are located and variegated, you're correct, the signs do not correspond to the physical location where they are, but they're, they're variegated in color and variegated in size to match the variegation in the buildings, to convey to the audience the concept that this is a village, rather than a single monolithic building with one operator who's controlling everything and who's just bought goods from these different representatives. Again, a factory outlet conveys to people that they can go there and deal directly with the original manufacturer, and it's not just one huge warehouse, so to speak. And so having variegated sign sizes, and variegated sign colors, and variegated sign placement along the buildings is important in conveying that concept. And it's one of the, if you go through the record of the original approval of the, of this master sign permit and also the project, the idea was, they didn't want it to be monolithic. That's why the architecture had to be variegated color, size, facing. It's not one straight mass.
So, so my other question about that study kind of dovetails into the earlier discussion that was made of, of the environmental impact. And by its very nature, it's, it's local, correct? I mean, we should be looking at a, a local environmental impact, whether that's, you can define that as less local than the City of San Clemente, but by its very nature, it is local in that respect. Is that, is that correct?
Well, actually, I'd say maybe something slightly different is that the environmental looks at the, the bigger area, the bigger environment, whereas your findings you'd make are more neighborhood or your city-specific as to character of neighborhood and things like that. So I think the environmental is the, the bigger picture about what you're doing to the environment, whereas the findings you make under your ordinance are more neighborhood or smaller area.
So to that end, a lot of the statements that are made in support of signage in this Villanova report were talking about U.S. populations at large and national surveys. Do you have any surveys that have been conducted that deal with the local area and the, and the view on signage?
Yes, and I think it's two different points. Again, I apologize if you felt that the entirety of the Villanova report was directed to physical impacts and physical changes to the environment. We, we actually agree that for purposes of how these signs fit into the existing environment, we talked about before, existing environment versus plan-to-plan, that we're looking just at the city. We didn't, we're not, our letter, for example, with all the photos of all the other signs, are just signs in the city. I think what the professor was trying to get at is, is the concept of when you got it, get a vested right under a development agreement to build a factory outlet center, what does that mean? What do people think a factory outlet center is? And the concept is that it's something that has a selection of national brands sold directly by those brands, and for purposes of defining what a factory outlet center is, you have to look to other factory outlet centers around Southern California or whatever. That's not a SEQA issue, that's a question of how you define the vested rights. And so in our view, the Villanova report establishes the principle that you have to have these unique manufacturer signs presented in a variegated way to convey the idea of a, of a factory outlet mall. If you don't, it's like permitting a store, saying, but you can't have bathrooms. We approved a store, you have a vested right to a store, but you can't have bathrooms. To us, the concept of, of having these variegated national brand signs was a limited selection that we've agreed to, is, is the same as an inherent part of a factory outlet mall, just like having a bathroom is in a regular store.
And my last question, I promise, is--
Okay, it is your last.
It is my last question.
I'm just telling you.
I just want to make sure that are 75% of the square footage of the outlet malls factory outlets that sell only a single brand of merchandise?
Single brand of merchandise. I, I believe the majority of the, these are branded areas or whatever, that people that operate the center could speak more about it, but in, in my shopping, it's Nike and the other stores with, that correspond with their signs. It's not, there isn't one company operating under the name of somebody else. Starbucks really owns the Starbucks, Nike really owns the Nike store, I think that's there.
Hey, I would think that there is over there now, an outlet store there that sells kitchen, kitchen efforts. And you can walk in there and you can buy multiple brands of kitchen pots and pans in that store that's over there right now.
We do have a small number of tenants that are, that are combined tenants. We have tenants that have combined smaller luxury goods, in other words, we couldn't have a full Gucci store, but we have a tenant that has Gucci product, and a bunch of other tenant brands within their envelope. We have another one, Tilly's, they have a variety of software products. So there's a few, very small number of them, and like you said, kitchen, the kitchen. But most of the tenants, I'd say 75%, are single, single brand.
One is enough. Thank you. You're done.
I'm done.
For now. With that, I'd like to, oh, Mr. Wu, I neglected you over there, but Mr. Tally's been on a roll here.
I only have one question.
Of whom? The staff or the--
That's for the staff.
Okay.
Amber, certainly, Council Burns just told us that the color needs, needs more research, so that would be input to the city council when they make a decision. But my question to you is, if color exceptions were to be recommended and were to be approved by the city council, and they, you, the staff is going to approve each of them when they implement it, how would you review that? Is that a discretionary review? Is that a ministerial review?
That would be reviewed and approved by the city planner, most likely the community development director in conjunction, and that would be at the staff level and would be a, a ministerial review.
So any color they represent, basically, you just accept it? It's a procedural thing?
No, the staff would be looking at the color palette in relation to the overall design of the building itself. For example, a neon green would not most likely be identified as an acceptable color.
Okay.
Or weak conditioning, since it's a regional outlet that maybe has, requires its own administrative review.
Okay, thank you.
I think you're about ready to open the public hearing, but I just wanted to address one thing that hasn't been brought up that the applicant stated while they were up here, and that is that they had claimed that the city had never approved just a monolithic color tone, meaning that we've never approved a center that had just bronze coloring, if I am remembering that correctly. And I'd like to clarify and say, yes, we have. Particularly, the one that's most adjacent to it is the Holiday Inn Express. That's right across the Valley Way, that is also fronting on that freeway just south of the project site. In addition, we had conditioned the Ralph Shopping Center in the Talega Village to only have the bronze pin-mounted lettering, and those are just a couple off the top of my head.
That's not the normal Ralph's color, is correct.
No.
You remember that.
And they are the bronze pin-mounted colors in both examples.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. With that, we'll now go to the public testimony and open it up for public testimony. I would also like to acknowledge that we've received other communications from the community. Mr. Jim Ruhl, and we also had a very large missive from the applicant, Madison Spock, an email electronically of some 100 pages, of, but half of which were, I think, photographs of the local area, and we've acknowledged receipt of that. We also have the Dyosonite an email from Debbie Mulligan, from Fair Harbor, opposed, John Coretta-- Harbor, opposed, John Coretti, Alan and Georgia Corson, Vicki McMurty, Jason Chase, and Lynn Stanley, Rachel Feinberg, Cody Diaz, and Carla Hogan. Most of these are opposed to the signage. I'd like to acknowledge for the public use, this is the technical supplement to the staff supplemental EIR, just a little light reading that we had to go through in the last week. And in that are 69 emails that the public sent to the city based on the scoping meeting that was conducted as we first started this process in the EIR. Some people, in fact, emailed twice on it, and I, I probably will take this list of names, I pulled out of the supplement report and give it to the recording secretary rather than read all 69 names, but to assure the people that did comment, based on the scoping meeting and the original notes of preparation, those were printed and are in, contained in this, in this volume that we received about a week or so ago. And for the record, I'd like to make sure that many of your citizens took time to, to communicate to the city on this subject. With that, we'll start the public process and read the cards. Everybody has three minutes. I might read three names, and if you'll line up over on this side, I'll make things go a little quicker. If you're a late arrival, please give the card to the recording secretary if you've just arrived. The first one to speak tonight is Ann Gill, followed by Jennifer Massey, and followed by that by Gail Haiduk. So, Ann Gill?
Thank you. Ann Gill would like me to, um, Gail Haiduk. Ann Gill would like me to speak for her. Is that okay for you?
That's acceptable.
Is that okay, if I take her three minutes and my three minutes? I've written down what she wants me to say.
Go.
These are by now, it's for her. Okay. Ann Gill lives across from the Broadmoors, and we are ground zero. We look at the outlet mall every single day. Ann said that she has lived there for 35 years, and for many of those years, 30 some years, she had a beautiful ocean view, which now is not so beautiful. There's, it's a lighted view now, and the ocean is pretty much blighted and gone. And it has, it, her words were, it is a blight on the neighbor, neighbors, especially for those of us who live in the Broadmoors, and I'm sure for many of those people who also live in Marblehead. She thinks that it decreases our property value, and states that she believes that there should be signage maybe at the beginning of Vista Hermosa, and that if you had a sign that was attached where it said Vista Hermosa, that maybe you could have a sign that said outlets, and that that might be a better option. Okay. Did I do okay, yes?
Thank you.
That's hers. Okay, I'll start mine.
Just a minute, you're not Jennifer Gill?
No.
You have a speaker card?
I'm Gail Haiduk.
Huh?
I thought you called Gail Haiduk, I'm sorry.
Number three, Jennifer, Ms. Massey behind you there, second, so don't go very far. Exercising crowd control here.
Thank you, thank you all very much for all your hard work. My son is now the mayor of Mosel Beach, so I don't envy you all the hard work you guys have to do and the flak you take from both sides, we appreciate it. Anyway, has there ever been a study done regarding freeway signs causing drivers to be distracted and causing traffic accidents, which today the speeds people drive could cause great bodily harm? I mean, I know people going down Avenida Del Mar are so entranced by the shops that they consistently make U-turns where it says, right on the pavement, no U-turns, and they get arrested constantly for violating the signs, but that's because they're very distracted. And I just wonder if there's ever been a study by the Sheriff's Department or anybody to how distracting these signs could be to drivers. I think that might be somewhat important. We have enough distractions today for drivers, we don't need more. I would ask you too, if you do decide to approve the requested lighting by the mall, that you would ask them to have the lighting turned off when the stores close, so that the people who are affected can get some sleep. In my opinion, all that is needed are classy, architecturally designed signs at a few off-ramps notifying people that are on ramps that there is an outlet mall at exit, whatever the number is, Avenida Vista Del Hermosa. Signs along the freeway at off-ramps or on-ramps would let people know, oh, there's an outlet mall there. I think that's, would do, in my opinion. And finally, San Clemente, I've lived here 37 years, is a classy city. Glitzy, bright, color lighted signs reduces our city, and this again is in my opinion, to a reminder of the red light districts of places we don't want to emulate. Thank you.
Thank you. Get now. Gail Haiduk. Your three minutes of glory.
Carlsbad Mall has no signage. You can't see it from the freeway, but yes, it has made money, so we all kind of wonder. Also, the Carlsbad Mall is way to the side, you can't even see it from the freeway. You can frickin' see the outlet mall. You can't miss the outlet mall. You see anything that's that huge anywhere, I bet everybody in here would go, that's an outlet mall. They wouldn't have to have one single sign of anything. That's an outlet mall. They're all look the same. I've just been to 21 states this year. Outlet malls in every state look exactly the same. They have the same stuff in every outlet mall, okay? It's all there. Most of us use a GPS, we can find an outlet mall. We Google it, we say outlet mall if we want to find an outlet mall. If we're driving down the freeway and we see something that's that big, we know it's an outlet mall. Before I came here tonight at 4 o'clock, I went up and down the freeway to see what the signs really were. Can I ask a quick question? Are the signs that are 64 feet, is that approximate what's on quote, the temporary signs right now? Okay. Well, if that's true, then as I'm coming down the freeway, I did this twice tonight, to see what the signage meant to me. So I'm going north on the freeway, as I'm going north on the freeway, I can start to see the signage right at the football field, and I can see it for about a half a mile, and that's it. So we're talking a half a mile. And I can only see the signs facing the freeway, I can't see the other signs that are facing that other section, you know, the, the north side. Then I come south, and I don't see the freeway till I get to the overpass, the signs, and the only signs I can really see there are the signs that face, face the north freeway. And, and that probably, you won't be able to see them because I think there's going to be a hotel, and the hotel will be in front of them. And then the ones that are the, facing on the freeway side, I could barely see them because there's a berm, and the berm, if you look at, the berm kind of hides a lot of those signs, and there's going to be some trees, finally, that are going to hide some of the whiteness, and I'm so happy, but I have a feeling they'll cut those trees down so they can have their signs. But I think I, and I drove the freeway on the far right-hand lane, and then I said to my husband, that's not fair, let's go the middle lane and see if it's any different, and you couldn't see them. If you were a single driver in a car looking for an outlet mall and looking for a Starbucks, please God, I hope I'm not behind you going 65 miles an hour, because you shouldn't be looking, because you're going 65 miles an hour and a half a mile to decide whether you're going to get off, that's kind of scary. So I've always been for the signage, as the other woman spoke. Also, the 42-foot tower, is that currently a 42, is there a 42-foot tower there now, or is that new? And how high is the highest spot right now?
Thank you very much. Answer the question, please, Amber.
I don't know, I, if I'm understanding your question, so where the finish grade is a, what the applicant is proposing is a 40-foot tall, 42-foot tall tower on top of that finish grade of the back parking lot area.
Okay, that's your question, thank you.
Okay, I'll send you now.
Okay, the next three are Robert Kraszlewski, Larry Corwin, and Taiga Takahashi.
And Mr. Chair, generally, you don't allow back and forth on-
I know.
-other comments, but that's certainly at the chair's discretion.
I know, and I would probably stick to that and throughout the rest of it.
Well, you people really have a white elephant on your hands, don't you? Mr. Brown, you were the original planner on the outlet malls?
No.
Who was?
Don't know.
Who okayed a four-story hotel?
City Council and Plining Commission in, in 1998.
They okayed it. And what happened to the 62-foot limit?
Mr. Chair, you can see this is going into cross-examination.
I know.
You're going to have to decide if you're going to take that fork in the road.
I guess I'm not going to take question, I'm just going to hear testimony, please.
Pardon?
I'm not, we're not going to get into testimony or answer a question, so let's, please, just make your presentation.
Okay, so you're going to put a four-story hotel, is there any place in San Clemente that has a four, four-story hotel? No. And why does a hotel have to have five signs? One on each side, it's four sides to a building, and you want to put five signs on it? And also, I'm going to be at your office, maybe this, next week, I want the survey map because one of your towers are, is above 62 feet. It is. You know which one I'm talking about? No? Don't look at me.
Okay.
I know it's above 62 feet, but I want to be sure, and I want a survey map of that area before that building was put up. Okay? That's about it, but you really goofed up.
Mr. Larry Corwin, please.
Hi, I'm Larry Corwin. Before I begin, is there any chance I can get your first slide back up on the screen? It was the one that actually showed the property-
You have three minutes of just, of your own, your own public testimony, please.
Okay, I just, well, my name is Larry Corwin, and currently I serve as the president of the Marblehead Community. The Marblehead Community comprised of five sub-communities and roughly 1,000 homes. And what I wanted to do today is to maybe make you more aware of the impact that inappropriate signage will have on this community. Briefly, I'm going to take about 30 seconds, give you a little history. There's Marblehead Coastal, which this outlet mall is part of, and there's Marblehead Inland. That was all one project. It would have been connected had the Interstate 5 not been there. And it was one owner, one master planned project. Obviously, the inland component was all residential, it got built out. At the time, the homes ranged between $200,000 and $500,000. Today, they range between $650,000 and $3.5 million. So it's a very upscale community. It's just directly across from the site itself, some as close as 300 yards. And it is varying elevation. As we go from the freeway, it does go up the hill. So everyone in the community who faces west has a view of this project. Now, the, the homes have been there for decades before this project, and the history of the project is gone all around. But I don't think anybody in the community ever envisioned a project of this scope. So what I'd like to do tonight is ask you to hold a very narrow interpretation of what the developers' rights are. If you have to stick to a 1999 ordinance, please do. No variations, no exceptions. It's there, when they built the project, they knew of these ordinances, they knew of the conditions of this. There's other thousands of other homes in this surrounding area that will have to look at this forever. The one thing I could say, they were very honest, all they're talking about is economics. They're talking about the ability to sell signage, they're talking about the revenues that it generates. Just ask City Council, their performance is way under anything they've ever estimated. What you'd be doing is you'd be sentencing to the, the residents of this community to stare at these signs for the rest of their lives. And we ask you, whatever they're entitled to, that's what they get, no exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you. Taiga Takahashi, followed by Michael, Michael Singleton, and after that, Mike Zellers. Good job.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Hi, my, my name is Taiga Takahashi. I'm an attorney for the applicant, and I wanted to address some of the legal issues, especially since the letter that I wrote and I sent in, and I take responsibility for it, obviously, came up, I wanted to address some of the issues with that. So on the discussion of alternatives and, and the SEIR, I apologize if it came across that the, you know, if, if I was trying to say that the SEIR shouldn't have evaluated alternatives, you know, as Mr. Garrett said, we, you know, I believe as well that the SEIR should have evaluated all those alternatives, including the no-project alternative. The point that I was trying to make in that letter was that, you know, apart from the, the EIR evaluating the different alternatives, there are also feasibility considerations in SEQA analysis that you have to take into account when you're deciding which alternative that you're going to end up recommending to the City Council. So that's, that's the discussion on each of the alternatives that I was trying to, trying to make, not necessarily, not that the SEIR, SEIR shouldn't have included a review, and, you know, it should have, and we're glad it did. And so that letter details most of the reasons why, you know, we believe that the no-project alternative isn't legally feasible or, you know, not feasible for other reasons, and the, as well as the other alternatives. And we think that the alternative five, which is the, the updated project or the DRSC evaluated alternative, is the, is the superior alternative of the ones evaluated in the EIR. And then on the, along the same lines on alternative number four.
An amber alert?
Strong warning.
Let's everybody else go airport mode if you could, please.
And on alternative number four, which is the, the one that says that, you know, there shouldn't be any color exceptions, the comment I wanted to add to address Commissioner Wu's comment about the free speech and constitutional implications, I wanted to add that it's not just the free speech constitutional considerations, but it's also equal protection and due process. And what I mean by that is, you know, there was a comment earlier about logos being allowed or not allowed, or limited colors being allowed or not allowed on what I think appears to be a voluntary basis. And the, and the problem with putting that restriction now on the outlet center is that if you look around town, both interior and freeway signs, you'll see that other individuals and organizations and stores are allowed to use the colors that are consistent with the trademark or logo. They're allowed to use logos or not logos, and then, and so there, it's not just a free speech consideration, it is a free speech consideration if the color is, is, is part of the expression of the, of, of the sign, but also how you're, how you do or don't single out the outlets or this particular project from the same, you know, rights and privileges that a lot of other individuals and organizations are allowed to take advantage of across the city.
Thank you. Mr. Michael Singleton, followed by Mike Zellers or Zellers, I think it is. After that will be Lynn Sobel.
Good evening. Mike Singleton, I happen to be the expert witness that did the aesthetics study that the environmental document was based on. I have 37 years of doing environmental documents that are related to aesthetics, both a certified planner, landscape architect, and I concentrate on nothing but visual studies when it comes to SEQA. One of the points I, I guess I was kind of surprised based on the extensiveness of this study, what was required of us. 54 key views, 21 of those considered to be visible, 32 overlay sims, 29 daytime sims, four nighttime sims. With the hundreds of documents that I have done, this is the most extensive study I've ever been requested to do. So quite surprised how the conclusions can be changed without an equal level of proof or burden or discussion as to why those conclusions were changed based on my professional input and my expert status. So certainly from a SEQA standpoint, this, a city has a right to define its own thresholds of significance, but the city of San Clemente has not done that, they utilize the state's requirements. And so when you look at the- And so when you look at the requirements that they have, there is not a finding there that's justifiable as a significant impact. Now, a city, as I mentioned, can take a discretionary process, and certainly can use that as a basis to turn down a permit process, but to call it a significant SEQA impact, if there are no other thresholds that have been adopted by a city, is, in my mind, questionable. So when you do have different opinions of experts, it should be something that's discussed during the process. We did go through probably at least six rounds of revisions on this, and my standing stayed consistent throughout the document, but then, all of a sudden, to hear that they have just been changed with no discussion or no other proof. You didn't see any of the simulations or any of the materials portrayed here tonight by staff, or a substitute set of those, that information, to be able to counter an expert witness. So certainly, I'm able to answer any other questions you may have, but that's at least my perception of this, and why the conclusions were made, based on SEQA requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Zellers, followed by Lynn Sobel, and then Marilyn Ferber.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, and members of the commission. Mike Zellers, I live on Avenida Oliva in San Clemente, which my home butts onto the frontier and looks directly across upon the outlet mall. I know there's a definition, or some discussion of what an outlet mall looks like, but I think pretty much everybody knows what an outlet mall looks like. An outlet mall is an outlet mall. And I think Carlsbad is a pretty good example of not seeing all the bright lights. One of my concerns, not only is the signage in the discussions here, and I'm not trying to argue with Mr. Singleton or his expertise, but this, it doesn't take an expert to go in my backyard and take a look at the property across the way, and how unfortunately, it's destroyed the view of the ocean. There are lights, and I understand it's the holiday times, holiday lights have been put up, they're white in color, and they trim the building right now, but we can't see the stars or anything across the ocean. We bought our home at a time when it, that we could do that. In terms of the value of homes, yeah, they did drop, because we've talked to a couple of realtors about it. Nobody likes looking into the back of that. But more importantly, or just as important, is the idea of changing or giving some flexibility to add four colors. I looked at the four that were contained in the report, and you probably get a good idea what it looks like, because they're flying those colors now in the towers adjacent or inside the outlet mall tonight. They've been doing that since October. We had some neon-red type colors, so tonight they're rotating, probably for the holidays, but the colors are pretty, they're not attractive. They're, it's unfortunate to look out on that from our house, and our neighbors do too. So if you wanna get a sense of what those four colors look like, drive by the outlet mall, or anybody else that wants to take a look, you get an idea. But thank you for taking into consideration that, I appreciate what the builders trying to push forward, but I think as the residents, we'd like you to stick straight to the rules and make it as narrow as possible, and we look forward for the opportunity of readdressing this with your assistance at the earliest convenience with the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Sobel, how are you doing?
Hi, good evening. Commissioner Brown and fellow commissioners, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. And I also live on Avenida Oliva in Marblehead. I moved in on Halloween Day 1999. And our real estate agent assured us that there was an outlet mall that was coming, but that it would be, that the city was very tough on signage, very conservative, and that I didn't, my husband and I did not have to worry about that as an aspect of impact to us. And I was happy about the outlet center, because it's within walking distance, so it's not an objection to the outlet center as a whole, it's to the signage. And our property values are directly affected by it. You know, I have a neighbor up the street that spent over $100,000 on a swimming pool with this swim-up bar and tropical slide and all of that. And think of the effect on the property values, on their home. Another point I wanted to address was the comments on the signage that we have along the I-5 freeway already, the Ralph signage. Well, if you think about it, those are in the northern portion of the city, in the outer limits of the city. It's not in the residential area. And when you talk about the halo-lit signage that's suggested, what about holiday hours, when there's extended hours? It does have a light pollution impact on our community. And when we do move into a home, we have a right to peace and tranquility, I would think, as a part of SEQA. And this signage is a blight to us, and definitely affects it in a negative way. Another concern that I've spoken about at prior city council meetings is the traffic impact. Every time we get on Vista Hermosa and enter the Five North, I mean, it stopped traffic. And I'm concerned about looky-loos and the impact that the signage would have on safety. There's a lot of crashes on a daily basis, I think, on that section through our city. And also, our city's image. I mean, we have a fabulous image as a small beach-town community, despite all the growth that we've experienced over the last decade or two. And think of the impact of that on the residents, and how our city is viewed as a whole. And I did also wanna mention Carlsbad outlets, like your first speaker did. I mean, there's no sign telling you to get off at Palomar exit, there's no view from the freeway, and yet that parking lot is packed. So I just don't buy the argument about the signage. And again, thank you so much for your time.
It's been Marilyn Ferber, I believe, and followed by Karen Ahola and Chris Ahola.
I'm Marilyn Ferber, and I've spoken before the council two times prior. I live in the Fair Harbor community, the most close, the closest to the view of the outlet mall. Is that better? Yes. I do see the lights, they're pretty at night, but that's about all I can say. I don't, I don't want to envision lit-up signs. I went to the developers' meeting last week, and I have noticed they've done a gracious attempt to reach out to the community, and I kept an open mind when I went. I still am very opposed to the signs. I can't believe the signs would make that much of a difference. Again, everyone mentions Carlsbad Mall, and that's what comes to mind, they're packed, they're successful, and they don't have signs. I may have mentioned, I moved here in 1986 with my family. I love San Clemente, I love the low-key nature of it, I don't want to see, as somebody said, glitzy signs. I keep hearing legal counsel mention the signs that are throughout the city, but they wouldn't, they're throughout the city, they're not concentrated. The outlet mall, you're gonna see a concentration, if they take staff recommendation, 24 signs, if it's the developers' appeal, it's going to be 36. The concentrated signs, it's going to be a true blight. I hope council considers how important our quality of life is to residents. I realize that there's a financial impact, and I know that we need revenue, but I don't think it should be at the expense of our way of life. Thank you very much.
Karen Ahola, followed by Chris Ahola, and then Edward Bayer.
I'd also like to thank the planning commission for their time spent on this, but I, more importantly, would actually like to thank staff for its work in connection with the freeway signs at the outlet project, as clearly they have worked to make compromises that at least attempt to mitigate the negative impacts of excessive corporate advertising along the freeway in San Clemente. However, the fact remains that the outlet center is built in a community with extremely restrictive signage codes, purposefully crafted to uphold the quality of life, lifestyle, and property values of San Clemente residents. Because the signage package proposed by the applicant and supported with modifications by the staff to approve a sign exception permit does not meet the legal findings necessary to grant an SEP, I'm requesting that the planning commission deny the applicant's request for a signage exception permit and excessive freeway advertising at the location. A substantive analysis in 2006 and 2007 concluded that the maximum number of signs that could be allowed per San Clemente signage code was one oversized freeway-oriented project sign, with a provision of one additional sign for a theater and one for an anchor bookstore. Nothing has changed since that time to alter the project's intrinsic ability to meet the requirements of the SEP finding. Indeed, all that has changed is the signage code is now more restrictive, and public opinion is stronger than ever about the need to minimize signage pollution in our community. Without wishing in any way to disrespect city staff, I believe that several of their answers appear to be crafted to make the shoe fit, and staff's answers fail to prove legal basis that the outlet project meets all the findings necessary to grant an SEP. Staff's answer to finding A fails to prove the site has unique circumstances that handicaps it and necessitates freeway tenant signage. Indeed, the exact opposite is the case. The project is located on the most prominent unimpeded location in the city, and is easily accessed by two arterial streets directly off the freeway. Staff's answer that reads "There are no unique circumstances pertaining to the site that would limit the signs that were greater than 64 feet," excuse me, is irrelevant to the SEP finding that a project have unique circumstances to be granted an SEP. In the history of the project since its inception, staff's and planning commission's findings have found that one project identification sign would adequately appraise people of the existence of the center, since the signs will not serve as wayfinding function, as many of the tenants are not located in the buildings to which the signs are attached, nor do those tenants have customer entrances near the signs. Staff's answer to finding C regarding the granting of a special privilege reads that "The project is located in the own or regional commercial zoning district in the city. The purpose of the regional zoning center is to provide a center for high-quality goods and services to San Clemente visitors." This product offering may be true, but it is irrelevant to the legal requirement that the granting of a SEP at the project is not a special privilege. It is. And references to other projects previously given signs in less intensive zoning areas is not a legal basis for concluding that no special privilege is being made now for the outlet project.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much. May I, can I say one more thing?
Chris Ahola, please.
Thank you to the lawyer for...
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Chris Ahola, 25-year resident of San Clemente. First, I'd like to say, when I'm looking for a Starbucks, this is what I use to find my Starbucks. I have a Starbucks app on here, and directions bring me right to Starbucks. When I need sneakers, I'll look them up, and it'll give me directions right where to get whatever product I need. I don't drive up and down the freeway looking at signs to buy my products. The question, I don't expect you to answer this, but why did staff come up with 17 signs? What's the basis for that? Maybe you guys can ask them later. I mean, why not 10? Why not 5? Why not 2? But why, why 17? I just didn't really see a basis for why they chose that number. As far as colors go, one-colored signs, there's lots of examples of malls that limit the sign colors to just one color. One nearby, up in, not west, north of LA, up Westlake Village, all their freeway-oriented signs are one color. I think they even have a Target sign, that's just a one-color Target sign, and it's not red. I've seen lots of other examples of single-color signs. Sign exception permit, your guidance for this says that, for a sign exception permit to be granted, "Special circumstances related to location or orientation must exist, which deprive the site or business of adequate sign visibility enjoyed by similar situated properties." Well, there's nothing depriving this site of any visibility. It's the biggest building in the city on top of a hill next to a freeway. Anybody can see it. There's no problems with visibility. So I don't see how you even get past this sentence in your guidance here for your SEP. But it does go on to, as Karen was mentioning, several different criteria needed to be met in order to proceed with this. One of them is, "Are there any special characteristics, including size, shape, location, end orientation, visibility, and proximity to the street, or length of street frontage, that do not allow the site or business to achieve the goals and objective of the zoning ordinance?" Again, that's the goals and objective of the zoning ordinance, or in this case, probably the sign ordinance, for adequate business identification. And the response in the staff report says that there are unique circumstances. Example, "The site is uniquely large, at 60.4 acres, making visibility of the signs that are not freeway-oriented difficult." Well, isn't that gonna be the case in any building? If you have a sign that's not freeway-oriented, it's gonna be hard to see from the freeway. That's not a unique situation for this project, that's any project. So I think they really fail to go through all these different criteria. They answer them, I mean, there's stuff written there, but it doesn't really justify why they need a sign exception permit. So I would recommend that you guys take a close look at these, especially the first one. Third one, grant a special privilege, and, actually, I think that's number five, but I can't even get past the first one. Thank you.
Edward Bayer, followed by Molly Lazarus, and then Ken Mayberry. And then Steve Mobock will be the last card that I have right now.
Hello, my name is Ed Bayer. I've lived in town since 1977. I've seen a lot of changes, and actually, for not the good things. A lot of things have happened that are not good. We live in a town that accepts the status quo. We live in, sometimes, I compare it to a living cemetery. We're afraid of lights, we're afraid of everything. We got a beautiful mall, and yet the city accepts smoke shops? I'm sorry. Smoke shops and another other things that are not helpful, massage parlors and tattoo shops. And we got that crap in town, and we all of us get excited when something good comes to town. A lot of nice things have been said here tonight that I agree with, but we're also running into some problems. Status quo always ends up in stagnation, whether it's a relationship, a family, a country, or whatever. I can only answer a few questions. The best property in LA is off Mall and Rye. When you look into Beverly Hills, or Dana, or into the Valley, you'll see the signs that say "City Lights." City Lights are a value, they're not that detrimental. And then also, in terms of signage, signage is so important, may not be important to you people, but own your own business sometime and find out how terribly important it is. Starbucks was mentioned tonight. Starbucks paid $250,000 for their logo and their color. I would ask you one thing, maybe talk to the city council and have them change the sign ordinance a little bit to fit this beautiful outlet mall. We should try real hard, but if I can give you some advice, listen very carefully to color. It speaks to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bayer. Molly Lazarus, followed by Kyle Mayberry.
Hello, my name is Molly Lazarus, and I, my husband and I have been residents of San Clemente for 22 years. Appreciate all that you're doing here on the planning commission to consider this measure. I, too, as many others here, I live in Marblehead, the inland Marblehead, on Viattecca, and I look, I'm right in the middle and see directly down on the outlet mall. Quite frankly, I was more concerned when it was being built, of how much it would destroy my view and my, the beauty and the aesthetics. And I can say that I can still see the ocean, however, the lighting situation does affect your ability to appreciate what you're seeing down below. Not only, not only does it deflect from being able to see the ocean view, and does it, but it creates a glare back into your house, and there are some... And there are some lights that they have inadvertently tilted towards Marblehead so that you'll have a very bright light shining right into your eyes. Very unpleasant. So they definitely have not considered, or do I think are they necessarily following completely the limitations that were put on them as far as directing their light? So yes, maybe for the holidays, they have some lights that are turning around, but they have some other lights that just seem to shine right into your windows, which is very unpleasant. And so therefore, I would say, I would also ask you to deny any modification of the signage, because I believe that what they are requesting is going to further damage the view that all the residents that have homes facing west will have. And also, it's not even aesthetics. I mean, it literally hurts your eyes when some of these lights come directed right at your windows. It would be like somebody shining a flashlight in your eyes. So that's what is happening. And if they're going to have these towers with lights, I dare say that the possibilities could be worse for our residents. I don't know if any others, anyone else here experienced that, but that's what I have been experiencing. Furthermore, you know, we, this is a very special place, and I'm very grateful to live here, and I think everybody else who lives here takes this as a blessing to us. And it's a unique place. And I really say that you need to consider something that you're going to do that has such long-term ramifications that would only lead to maybe further destruction of what's so unique about San Clemente. And I don't believe that we need this kind of signage. I would concur with what everybody else has said about the fact that you can still get great traffic flow into a viable, a viable center, just as in Carlsbad and other places. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Keel or Kyle?
Kyle.
Kyle Mayberry.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Mayberry. I'm a principal with Lynn Scott Long Green. He's been engineers and registered traffic engineer state of California. We prepared the traffic analysis for the report, and I was asked to address the second speaker's question regarding, are there any traffic safety studies as it relates to commercial signage? Based on our research, we aren't aware of any studies, traffic studies related to commercial signage. And as you may know, traffic studies typically are focused to a location or a roadway segment and focuses to the type of collision and the cause. So it doesn't get into specifics such as signage.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Stephen Noblock. This is the last card before I close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, greetings. Steve Noblock, 20-year resident of San Clemente. This evening, we've heard a number of comments about signage creating a blight and a reduction of property values in the, in the city. We've heard this comment at the, at the public meetings, various meetings have taken place. It keeps coming up. We commissioned a MAI appraisal, which I'd like to give to the staff. We have eight copies. And for the commissioners, it describes the sales history of Marblehead, Fair Harbor, Forrester Ranch. And contrary to the comments where people believe their property will be blighted and property values reduced, just the opposite is the case. Since the outlet malls were built, since the temporary signage has gone up, property values have continued to increase substantially. The MAI appraiser, who's been practicing for 20 years and knows a lot about values, has done an exhaustive review of the actual property values, and so I thought I'd give that to the, to the commission for their consideration. One additional thing I'd like to show is the slide. Do we get it up again?
I can't. It's going to take a while.
If you can, just wanted to show some, the issue has been discussed regarding the color palette. And all we're looking for, the outlets are looking for fairness in terms of the color palettes. And we talk about a blight. There was a comment about how this community looked like a red light district because of all these brightly colored signs. But when you drive around town and look at the various developments that have been built and the color palettes that you see on quality Spanish architecture, as we'll see if we can pull up this, the existing environment, if you look at the existing environment, and we have a number of slides, you look at the colors, this resolution from Ocean View Plaza, where the city at that time opined that the, a tenant, even a bank tenant within a grocery store was entitled to signage within a development. When you drive through town, take a look at what we see when we drive through town, from northbound, southbound. And then when you look, the offensive colors are green, red, orange, and raspberry. Now, do you see green around town anywhere? You see it everywhere. You see green all over town on quality Spanish architecture buildings. You see green signs all over the place. You see it literally everywhere. Red signs, you see red signs, and orange signs, orange and green, two of the offended colors you see all over town. Green signs everywhere, orange signs everywhere, lots of orange signs, lots of signs all over town on quality Spanish architecture. If you look at these signs, they're everywhere. In fact, the red signs are so ubiquitous, we, you couldn't picture them all. We have about 85 pictures here. The red signs, you can't count them. Almost 70% of every sign in San Clemente is bright red. And here's an example of it. As you go through, everything is red. It's ubiquitous. What we're looking for is fairness, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas. Additional card here, Mr. Richard Boyer. This is the last card.
Hi, my name is Richard Boyer. Residents were stunned. I read that in an archive news article related to the lawsuit. I think it was in the, in the Sun Post. It might have been the article that reported that the lawsuit had cost taxpayers $207,000. And here we are again, 10 years later. This is the fourth time for this same application. And last month, the city council just put, transferred another $300,000 supplemental, $300,000 into the legal fund, because the developer filed, according to the staff report, 92 lawsuits in Superior Court, a state lawsuit, and a federal, yes, he's making a federal case out of banners. I don't understand what the goal is. What I can tell you is that I came to be the president of the citizens group that filed a lawsuit at the invitation of a friend, and the issue wasn't secret. It was an issue. The issue was abuse of discretion. The developer, 15 days before staff's findings were discarded, and one sign turned into 32 signs through legislation at the dais. We were very upset about abuse of discretion, and that was what that reference in that news article was about. Citizens were stunned. During my time on the General Plan Advisory Committee, the single most important thing to residents of San Clemente is the village character and small-town feel. People cherish those. They want them preserved. If we start backsliding, there's no bringing it back. We've got something really special here. People recognize that. They value it. And that's why our sign code has been restrictive and ever more restrictive for decades. And I would like to encourage you to continue that. Thank you.
With all more cards, I'll close the public hearing, and...
Chair, interest? Late entry speaker?
Certainly, Alan. But please fill out a card for the record.
I'll fill out a card as soon as I get through. I promise. My name is Alan Corson, and I'm a citizen here and have been since '76. I also spent about three years of my life as co-chairman of the General Plan Advisory Committee. And one of our key goals was exactly what Mr. Byer said, and that was to preserve the small-town feel of San Clemente. I've seen Mr. Craig's projects in Cabazon. I've seen Mr. Craig's projects in, at the Citadel, which is the most gauche, obnoxious assemblage of signs that I've ever seen personally. I've also seen his signage down in Carlsbad, where you can't see anything from the freeway. And I assume that the Carlsbad project is a very successful one with no signs facing the freeway. The subject tonight is whether or not to allow him to have 50% more signage on the side of the buildings that face the freeway or not. And by doing so, he has to get a sign exemption permit. What it does for Mr. Craig is to give him 50% more income on the sales and leasing of those signs, which is the sign company, which is what one of the citizens who just spoke is also, I believe, still a vice president of the company? No? No more? Anyway, Mr. Noblock, who you also was, used to be a council member and parlayed it into a vice presidency of Craig. Very simple, just we want the nicest, cleanest, least obtrusive signage pattern that we can get, and most of the signs that they have proposed are such. But there are some of them that they want to put in that are color-intensive. Please fight against the possibility of doing that to our city. Retain what we have. Don, you know more than anybody, having been involved with the General Plan Advisory Committee and seeing our processes, that the people want to retain the small-town feel of our city, its charm, its beauty, its Spanish character. Please stay true to our efforts and follow suit by having us come in with a nice freeway-oriented sign program. Thank you very much for your time.
And Alan, please fill out a card for the recording secretary. Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing. And we've been at it for two hours. I'd like to go into recess for about 10 minutes. We'll recompete at 10 minutes after nine.
Once again, this all applies to the zoning sign ordinance that was in effect on five August nineteen ninety-eight. Is that correct? Sign exception permit previous section seventeen sixteen to sixty to allow freeway-oriented signs, individual signs that exceed sixty-four square feet and signs in excess of one square foot per linear foot of building frontage. There are A through F and some subset bullets of the findings here that include unique circumstances and grading the size of side of the business. Granting a sign exception permit is not contrary to the ten of the general plan, design guidelines, or the Marblehead specific plan. Granting the sign exception permit is not considered a grant of special privileges and consistent with the limitations of other similarly situated properties. Granting of a sign exception permit does not create a traffic or safety hazard. The granting of a sign exception permit does not adversely impact surrounding property by increased light, glare, or noise. And for freeway-oriented sign of the location, the site dictates the need for a freeway-oriented sign to allow adequate business identification. The design scale and material of the location of the freeway-oriented sign provides necessary business identification to motorists on the freeway without creating adverse visual impacts. The design scale and materials of the signs harmonize with the architectural design of the building it serves and are complementary to the city's image as viewed from the freeway. If applicable, the design scale and location of the building dictates the use of freestanding freeway-oriented sign rather than a building-mounted freeway-oriented sign. Those are the findings that have been laid forward for us versus the ordinances involved, the development agreement that's in effect. These are the legal bounds and kind of the sandbox that we are dealing with. With that, I'd also like to state, you know, in the city planner, please back me up on this, that by ordinance, we do not protect private views in the city of San Clemente. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. We only have certain, specific views that are approved by the coastal commission and other things in our general plan that are designated views, but private views are not protected.
That is correct.
With that, let's open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Wu is the first one to have his light on.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Amy to clarify another question from the speaker. I'm sure it's related to what you just explained to me about the applicant's request to have more than one square foot of sign area. But the question from the speaker was, why seventeen? Why is not a different number?
It's a great question. Staff based that recommendation based on alternative number two in SEIR. It gave some suggestions on an alternative that would limit the size and the number and the color of the signs. And so we pulled that number from the environmental document.
Does the number seventeen multiply by the recommended maximum sign area for each sign? Does that lead to exactly one square foot per linear foot of building frontage?
We haven't worked out that math problem, that equation, but we could certainly take a look at that for you.
It is under that one square foot of signage for one linear foot of frontage, so it's under that threshold. And then as far as the seventeen number, in addition to that, in the EIR alternatives goes into this, that seventeen number was taken from the signs that were displayed on plans that were originally reviewed by the city council when they first reviewed the project. So that's where that number came from.
Okay. Thank you.
It's kind of interesting to point out that in our staff brief, we had the council briefing and the decision papers and the staff brief from then Jim Holloway, who's community development from two thousand seven-ish or so, and it's almost come full circle via the EIR process this time, ten years later. When you read the, read that staff briefing about ten signs and seven signs and consistent patterns of, you know, of color, it's almost like we've gone full circle over ten years.
Right, right. It's quite complicated and it has multiple layers of issues to discuss. But I think my understanding is essentially the applicant is asking for the three items. First, to have the freeway-oriented signs. Secondly, to have the number and area of the sign based on one point five instead of one, one point zero. Thirdly, the applicant is asking for the sign maximum sign area to exceed sixty-four square feet. So I think we can, we can break that down to smaller, smaller questions and we can, I go with the simple one first. So the first question is, should we, should we allow freeway-oriented signs? It seems like from all the reports, from the staff recommendation, there isn't much contention on that. So unless we, we strongly want to go the other way, say no sign at all, then I will probably just skip that because it's almost a no-brainer. And so the, the amount of sign, how many signs should we allow? How big are these should we allow? That's the most contentious issue. I'll leave it a little later. So I jump to the color issue here, if that's okay. The color thing. First of all, we're looking at a color palette. The applicant is asking for a series of color palette. In addition to that, the applicant is asking for color exceptions. Regarding the color palette, the design review subcommittee has reviewed it and the EIR doesn't have, doesn't, EIR recognized those color palettes are okay. So I'm very reluctant to, to support the recommendation to further reduce the color selection to a single color because they do feel a little monotonous to me and I think it's overly restrictive. I'll give you a few examples. Sometime a sign or a logo has a figure in a background design. In other words, they have a background color. On that background, they have their letter or graphic. So you at least have two colors. There are ways to get around it and to, but the sign needs to be redesigned somewhat. And taking the example of a Tommy Hilfiger sign, between these two words, there's a little, little color box in between and there are actually three colors. The blue color on top and the bottom, then in the middle, there are white to the left and red to the right side. So I think it's a very difficult or sometimes it's not very practical to change that color to a single color. I'm not sure if in our proposal, in the staff recommendation, is white or black are considered colors. I assume they are, but some people don't consider them colors, but if they are also colors, then it's, it's just overly restrictive in my viewpoint. Color is just like other building materials. A lot of time when we have a building, a building element on the elevation such as the window trim, we try to make it a single color so as to make the building look consistent. But considering this elevation along the freeway, we're talking about, we're talking about a quarter mile long elevation. It's, it's not a single building. It's a building complex. So I don't like to see that there's little color variation, especially they are. They are all muted in a neutral color and so they don't jump out and catch people's attention too much. So that's for the, my opinion on the color palette. Continuing on the color exceptions, a different consideration certainly because of the legal issue. I'm a little, I don't know the answer, but I'm, I'm little reluctant to recommend the city council to, to get into a precarious legal mind of view. So we absolutely need a legal counsel to give the city council a good recommendation and some legal analysis on that portion.
Okay.
For now.
Okay. Good for now.
So my, my first question, I'd like to ask council to clarify one thing for me. When I'm trying to find these or trying to make findings, I need to maintain that they're consistent with the, the development guidelines that we had at the time of the development agreement, so nineteen ninety-eight, the sign program that we had in nineteen ninety-eight, as well as the consistency with the Marblehead, Marblehead Coastal Development Standards or the specific plan for that, for that section, as well as the general plan. Is there a priority that I need to use in making this or in that analysis?
Well, the general plan is the top of the constitution. There's the constitution for the city and then the specific plan is the next in the hierarchy and then comes the zoning. And of course, the development agreement wraps that all up together. So that's kind of the hierarchy of the approvals, but they, they should be, they should all integrate except for the general plan could have changed, but the specific plan and the development agreement and the zoning should all be consistent and frozen as it was in nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay.
When the development agreement was executed.
Okay. So, so to kind of follow on, I think, the logic that, that Commissioner Wu was using here, there's, there's a couple of questions before us. The first question is, are freeway-facing signs appropriate? And, and I've gone back through the, through the Marblehead Coastal Development Standards in the specific plan because I think the, the zoning ordinance in effect at the time clearly allows us as a matter of discretion to, to allow for freeway-facing signs. And so, so now that I know that the bottom of the pyramid allows me to, to do that, I go and I take a look at what was the intent at the time and what were the development standards that existed when the development agreement was signed, right? Because I, I make this statement all the time, which is, I really, you know, I guess get a little agitated when somebody moves right next to an airport and then they complain about airport noise. So I want to make sure that, that the developer is held to the standards that existed at the time that they signed the development standard. And there's a very specific section that discusses signage here. And signs shall be permitted in accordance with the city sign ordinance, except as modified by a sign program for the site. We're talking about that today. It then goes on to talk about the signs within the entertainment complex pedestrian plaza area. And in that specific section and enumeration, it talks about, it talks about being able to promote diversity and imagination in a scale proportional to the pedestrian-oriented businesses. It also calls out the types of signs that are considered acceptable provided that they are orientated to the plaza with a maximum height. And it talks about the, the types of signs and what shall be permitted. And what strikes me as interesting about this is the absolute absence of the same kind of defining characteristics about the freeway-oriented signs. And it, and it, and it seems to me that, again, putting myself back in time in nineteen ninety-eight and nineteen ninety-nine when this was developed, that if there was this overriding concern and there was this aggressive push to be able to do all of the wonderful economic benefits that this regional commercial center would do, that there would have been some language about that. And, and so it, it's hard for me to harmonize the, the attention that was given towards the interior signs, which I think we've all seen demonstrations of today on the pictures, and, and has that diversity and that imagination and that expressive content with, with what's being asked for tonight. Because they knew about this when they signed the development agreement, that they could do all of these wonderful expressive things on the inside, but that that same right was not afforded to them on the freeway-facing side. And there was certainly a period in which they could have negotiated for that. It could have been written into the development agreement, but it wasn't. Instead, the discretionary sign permit was put in place. So, so that leaves me at the place of, do I think that freeway-facing signs are necessary? I tend to probably agree with Commissioner Wu that some limited freeway-facing signs probably are within our discretion and are things that we could make a finding for. But, but I think it's very important that we understand that when they signed the development agreement, they didn't have that right. They had the right to have a discretionary permit process, which we're going through right here. I also think that if they had wanted to have that expressive color palette, they would have had that added at that time. And, you know, they have that expressive color palette. They specifically had it put in place for this commercial regional center in nineteen ninety-eight for the interior, but yet there's no discussion about that on the exterior. So I, I tend to think that we need to live within what was bargained for and, and what we have. And I guess that's my opinion on that part of it. I, I do concur that adding any type of discretionary permit on color variation, I think, is a slippery slope that, you know, I don't want to be here having to hear an appeal on why somebody didn't choose, you know, rosebud red or whatever color it may be because of a ministerial act. I think it's, you set the color palette and that's the color palette that's established.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So I definitely agree with, one of the speakers made a comment that I can, I can, I can definitely agree with, and that is that our future generations of shoppers will need signage less and less. Going to rely on their cell phones, their cars are going to take them where they want to go. They're not going to need a freeway sign to get them there. However, we're, we're not quite a hundred percent there yet. So getting back to the project on the table, we have an interesting, an interesting position here. I've read through the, the findings and I think I can, I can make these findings. I'm not entirely comfortable with all six of the findings for the SAP, but they, they get us across the line. So with that said, I'd say that approving the SAP as it's currently proposed sort of counters all of our efforts as a city in what we've been doing for the last twenty years. And that effort has been to improve the, the visual experience in town, specifically with signage removal. In fact, there's been signs that have been removed and, and we're not supporting signage now. And even back then, when this project was, was on the table, there wasn't a whole lot of support for new signage, I'd venture to say. So we've invested a lot of time and energy cleaning up the visual experience, as I just said, though not detrimental, in reasonable amount. The proposed project in its current state would definitely be unattractive. And I think to staff's recommendation and Commissioner Wu and now Commissioner Tally, with some limitation of thoughtful placement with smaller signs, fewer signs, the package would be less obtrusive. It'd still meet a need expressed by the applicant, but it'd certainly be less obtrusive. So when it comes to color, I believe that there will be enough character in the logo design to, to really, to compensate for the lack of color. Condition eight in the report, the staff's recommended condition, asks for a single color sign and design review subcommittee considered that. And there are four colors that were considered. They're all pretty close and from a distance, I think, it'd be very difficult to, to really determine whether it was brown or black. However, according to the presentation, the applicant is proposing all bronze, all single color, uniform color along the east side of the face of the freeway. So all of that signage will be one single color, which gives me a lot of comfort. So I can, I can, I can support staff's recommendation with the, the fewer signage. I think that was a good explanation as to why the seventeen signs were being requested. I think that's reasonable and I support the project.
Well put. Let me kind of agree with some of the comments you made. We have been in a sign reduction mode for the last twenty years. We certainly went round and round about that and discussed it with the, the now Sprouts Stein Mart project up there on Australia and the freeway signs there. We got a loud and clear signal from council on that. It was very emotional. We know where we stand on that. And I, and I agree with the effort of the city over the last twenty years to reduce freeway signage. And I certainly agree or I feel for the, the, the many people that showed up here tonight and their feelings on the subject. I certainly feel for the other sixty or seventy people that took the time and put the emails that we, I didn't read tonight and they're in the technical supplement because this has been a very emotional issue. I think, like Mr. Boyer said, people were shocked the way, way it happened in two thousand and seventy. I think the process this time has been more open, more consistent. Even that said, like I said earlier to all of us, sometimes we don't get to use our feelings on the subject here. We have to new, we have to bring our skill set and we have to comply with the laws. And this is what was put in place by a city council, planning commission many years ago that we're dealing with tonight. And it's hard to make that translation, to put yourself back in time some twenty years, but that's what we require to do here. And so even though I empathize with the, the many people that came here tonight, I'm going to support the staff recommendation because the regulations were put, the agreements were agreed to. In regards to, I think Mr. Tally brought a good point. There was a lot of effort in the, in the site plan, specific plan, the agreement about the interior signage. And then we've kind of left the outside signage for a later date. I do review, I had a very good history lesson with a good friend of mine that lives here in town that was in the early consulting stage of the project. And he stated to me that this project went through twenty-six or twenty-eight design review subcommittee hearings for the project, for the buildings we see right now. And that Mr. Craig attended every one of them and was involved with the design. So we've had a lot of, a lot of thought was put in by the design review subcommittee of then. Think, I mean, I've got two design review subcommittee members here tonight, think about twenty-eight meetings on one project. And so there's a lot of, a lot of process put into it. In the sign area though, there was a design on the dais happening that was, it was obviously had severe fallout. It's interesting to note in our staff tonight, we have the original, one of the original agreements that was recommended by staff back twenty years ago, and we've almost come full circle. Ten signs on the one building, extensive language about dark palettes, all that stuff. Very, very specific limitations on bright colors, whatever, written by then the director of community development, Jim Holloway. We've almost come to ten signs on the east building. Instead of eight, there are seven signs recommended by staff today. The palette's down to one. I think back then they were saying there was one or two and color could be used on the south side. I will also bring out that Ralph says a very outstanding logo and we made him pin-mounted in Toledo. There are examples in town here that, and that that's what the, in fact, the applicants come forward with. So I think we've kind of reached a nexus to me that, it's one thing you probably, if you had the current, current ordinance in front of you, you'd be, I'd be very comfortable with the current ordinance because we helped shape it. But this is nineteen ninety-eight we're dealing with here. And so I think the, the staff recommendation limits the applicant compared to the tenant signs he asked for. It, I think it's a very good balance for the outlet ID signs on the tower and on the buildings. Five hotel signs are, are accepted. And I, and I, I'm one of the ones that are going to say, keep it simple. And so all freeway-oriented signs should be dark bronze. You know, you want a little variation. I know you're a design review guy and that's in your blood. And I know that's the same with you and all of them. Commissioner Blackwell, I don't know, unfortunately, Commissioner Crandall can't be here tonight, but I think color can be, and we have legislated before, you say it's a slippery slope, but I think there's the may in there that you discovered or you discussed, Mr. Tally, not the will shall. And as, you know, as clarified by the city attorney that we have tonight. And so I think that's, there is sufficient basis for going forward with the staff recommendation. I think it, the applicant doesn't get what he wants. He gets some of what he wants. I think we are trying to contain the, and help, as EIR said, provide some sort of balance for the people across the freeway. And so I think it's a compromise that, I guess if nobody's happy, maybe that's a good way to put it. But once again, we're bound by an agreement that was signed on the fifth of August nineteen ninety-eight. I knew where I was when I, when Kennedy got assassinated, you know, I'm beating myself. When Neil Armstrong put his foot on the moon, I knew where I was when the, when the Challenger went up. I had friends on that. And I know where I was when nine-one-one. I don't know where I was on the fifth of August nineteen ninety-eight. And so with that, I'm, I'm going to support the approvals that we recommend going forward to city council.
Chairman, regarding the color, I want to add that the effectiveness of limiting the color to one color depends on whether we can exclude a color exception. Because if you look at those national logos, national retailers' logos, many of them are red, the bright red, try to grab your attention. Could be distracting for other people, but, but those are bright colors. In fact, they're all energetic colors and they're all bright, highly saturated. You see, after red, you see lots of blue and then you see a variety of other colors, pink, purple, orange, yellow, and green. So if, if we cannot effectively exclude the color exceptions, in other words, if we have to allow them to use some, some of the federally registered trademark, then limiting the rest of the logo to one color loses meaning because those color will be much more vibrant than the color palette here. And that's a big unknown thing. We don't have answer here. I doubt that we can regulate them, but it all depends on the legal analysis.
You know, there are, there are outlets in this town that have been, sign exception permits have been put in place that are pin-mounted that are very consistent color palettes.
Right.
And we, one site we've mentioned here and has been done in other, other areas. I'll open a discussion. Mr. Tally, you have your, your light on as far as Commissioner Wu is arguing for a broader color palette.
No, I, I tend to agree with your statement, which is simpler is better. And, and I think that whenever we open ourselves up to discretion, we, we open ourselves up to an attack on abusive discretion, especially as it relates to why we may or may not like certain colors. I think the legal analysis that'll go forward to council regarding whether or not you have to allow colors on, on certain, certain trademarks or not will be very helpful for them in guiding, you know, the decision that they make. But I'm, I'm personally comfortable in making a, a recommendation that to the extent legally possible, we, we require all of the, all of the signage to be of similar color, meaning of the bronze color as staff has recommended. One of the things that I haven't heard us talk about today was the, was the illumination of the signs. We haven't spent much time or any time really talking about, about that. And, and I guess one of the concerns that I have was one of the conditions here, I think it was condition number eleven. concerns that I have was, one of the conditions here, I think it was condition number eleven, was that the illumination of all freeway-oriented signs shall be turned off at the time of the closure of each individual tenant. I think that's different for the outlet ID signs and for the hotel signs, which I believe they're, they operate under different times, but I do wonder what the visual impact will be if you start having, you know, signs that turn off at different intervals and then, you know, if they're strategically spaced so that they look somewhat aesthetically pleasing, and you start having these big kind of holes in them.
Well, the EIR came out with, don't let them go an hour after closure, but everybody closes at the time of business closure, as far as the tenant signs. Now, the hotel signs, the applicant request for twenty-four hours, because they're open twenty-four hours, one would hope, and then the ID signs are, I think they get turned off when, Miss Amy? What's the specific times for that?
So the outlet ID signs would be turned off when the outlets were closed?
Okay, and they're closed at the closure time of the business close?
That's correct.
Well, but a potential store could close at a different time than another store, resulting in maybe, maybe it's not a bad view. I, you know, just kind of wanted to hear what the impact was.
But the specific closure time now that's pretty...
That's a good point, and we could certainly clarify the condition to read at the point when the last store closes.
See, we've always set a time for everybody else in town, and if the individual shop owner decides to close earlier, that's their discretion. We just did that for the, for this Ranch of San Clemente Tennis Club, right? We set a time for them. If they choose to close earlier, that's their option, so...
The other piece of that is, when do they turn on? So one of the things that I think is aesthetically pleasing is the view of the sun setting or other, you know, dusk activities that occur, and I wonder, we don't have a condition on when the halo lighting actually begins to illuminate, and it seems to me that that should be done at some point, you know, after dusk, maybe when civil twilight has ended.
That's an aeronautical term, sorry, navigation term.
Because that's when you need the light, is at night, when it's dark out, not when it's beginning to get dark out. Is that a condition that...
I'm comfortable with that. Okay. Commissioner Blackwell, you've been sitting there patiently waiting for us to try to get in on the conversation.
No, just, thank you, thank you, just continuing the discussion on condition eleven. And it's, the more you look at something, the more you start to see things, right? And that is a good point. I would venture to say that the property management has certain curfew hours for lighting, when the lights go on and when they go off, and I'm, maybe we should ask the applicant, but I would think it'd be odd if one of the shops in there would close before everybody else unless it was some extenuating circumstance in which it'd be a one-off, right? So can we talk about that some more?
Well, what's the staff recommendation? Do you have it covered in your report, Amy?
Can we reopen the public hearing or ask the applicant?
No, I don't want to do that. I want to talk, I'm talking to staff right now.
Do you want me to ask the applicant?
So, right, if I can understand your question there, so the way, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that the shopping center currently works is, I believe this, all the shops close, and I mean retail shops that I'm talking about, either at eight or at nine, depending on if it's during the weekday or if it's on a weekend. Now, there are restaurants within the outlets that have different operating hours that go later in some cases, and then the applicant has also said that there's potential theater coming forward, and that would go later than the tenant hours of the outlets themselves. So those are two things to be aware of, but the center themselves, the retail typically all closes at one time. In addition, then there are special times when the outlets stay open later, the retail shops. For example, Black Friday, when they had a special event and they were open later.
Are they getting a special event permit for those issues?
They currently have an application for a conditional use permit. They have received their special event permits in the past, yes.
So they're allowed, they're doing this by two special activity permits, but they have another request in that's working its way into the system here?
Yes.
And that's in regards to...
As opposed to having to pull a special event permit annually, if you get a conditional use permit, you do not have to pull that permit on an annual basis.
Mm-hmm, okay, so that's coming our way sometime.
Yes.
In January.
It never ends, okay. And so the restaurants are another issue or another ordinance, or they're already covered, or what's the situation?
No, the way that the condition of approval is written is that once that restaurant closes, so let's say you have a restaurant that closes at eleven, then that restaurant sign would shut off at eleven.
And do we have curfew hours in place or whatever for restaurants yet, or no? That's another work in progress since we don't have it.
There are no curfew hours for restaurants.
Okay, there are, thank you. Commissioner Tally?
So I don't know how the commission would feel, but I don't like having nebulous hours floating around out there.
I think we've got people across the freeway that deserve a certain time that things shut down, and I think you bring a very good point up about when they turn on.
I think that I would like to see us add a time when the lights go off during the week and a time when they go off during the weekend, if they're operating under two separate hours, for the freeway-oriented signs. I think eight o'clock at night during the week and nine o'clock at night during the weekends.
I don't know, what the time is at now, what's that?
Is that the time, is it they're closing, the shops are closing right now, eight during the weeks and nine during the weekends?
I believe that is, but I'm looking to the applicant for clarification on that.
I did get clarification from the applicant that the retail shops do close at the same time around nine o'clock, or at nine o'clock, I should say, but as new restaurant tenants come in, those times of closing would vary depending on each tenant, and they are trying to attract some new restaurants to the outlet center, and so having later times might be more attractive for them to come in and have a sign that still stays on.
So I'd be comfortable making a nine o'clock time for the freeway-oriented retail?
I think freeway-oriented, I would recommend we go to keep a simple route again, in other words.
Nine o'clock.
You know, and you come on a certain time, you go off a certain time, so they get their, you know, a portion of their time to advertise, but we give the people across the freeway, you know, a reasonable time also that we don't have things going on forever. Now, the restaurant inside the mall, whatever, well, subject of keeping their lights on is whatever. Commissioner Blackwell, you've been patient.
Oh, I'm still on, I'm sorry. So just, again, continuing the discussion, yeah, I think we could put a time on it, but that time may vary. Maybe we consider just modifying this to read that the lights we turned off at the time that the retail portion of the outlet uses ending, or when it's closing time, and because it's still, it addresses that condition without adding a separate condition for restaurants, it addresses everything, because to staff's point, there will be uses there such as theater, they'll be open later than nine o'clock, and where are those signs going to be on the building, and how is that going to... So I think that addresses it. I mean, we can modify it to discuss the retail uses, and the signs would close or turn off when the center is closed, with the exception of entertainment dining establishments to stay open later.
So from the discussion that I'm hearing, I've heard several things, one is the lights facing, and making sure that those lights exactly turn off at a certain time, and where, the other question is, where is that, the theater signage proposed? Well, the theater signage is proposed on the southeast elevation, so not the elevation directly parallel with the freeway. That is considered the east elevation on here. So one possible solution would be to do, turn off, limit restaurant signs to non-east-facing elevation in that those would have, whatever time set would be desirable, and then tenant signs limited to the east-facing elevation, if we're talking about different times turning off. That's what I'm addressing with the theater signage, but if it's one time...
No, you have the residence, you're getting around that side of the corner, you have the residence on the other side.
Agreed. I'm not saying, you know, I'm just talking about the different topics that are bringing, being brought up here, or you have one time that says, you know, no later than this, but should the outlet sign, or the outlet tenants close earlier, then it needs to be at the time of close, if it's earlier than the time that's selected.
Okay. Commissioner Tally?
I think I would like to see uniformity, right? And that's, I don't want to see lights going off in the middle, and to me, that would be problematic and difficult for an enforcement mechanism as well. So the seventeen tenant signs that we're talking about, however those want to be appropriated, I think we set a time. If the retail shops are closing at nine o'clock, I think nine o'clock is where it is.
They turn on at sunset or dusk or even at the end of evening twilight, and they turn it off at nine o'clock.
Yeah, I think they're turned on, you know, what, thirty minutes after the sun sets, when you're at the end of civil twilight, and they're turned off at nine o'clock PM.
If the civilian world can understand that.
I'm sure, I'm sure they can brush up on it. And that solves the issue, and I also don't think it's necessary to take into account, you know, if there's a special activity like the Black Friday sale. I think, I think there's other means that are being used for wayfinding and promotional aspects of that, and I think we, again, keep it simple so the city is not having to find out, you know, what's going on in order to enforce its provision here.
Mr. Woo?
Yeah, I think uniformly enforce a nine o'clock turning them off, that's probably a good idea, because we don't want to look at the sign, decide whether it's a restaurant or retail, and that would be perhaps a content based, so I see that it's possible that we allow the movie theater sign to stay longer, but they stay inside. We're talking about freeway-oriented or freeway visit, visible only. So I think nine o'clock turning it off time, that's good for me.
Okay, so we modify condition approved number eleven to, for a turn-on time and a turn-off time of nine PM, is that correct?
I just want to clarify, clarification on that. Commissioner Tally had said tenant signs, but I want to clarify if that's project identification signs at nine or just tenant signs at nine.
Well, when the tenants are closed down, what's the outlet mall doing?
I'd be okay with the outlet ID signs.
Coming off.
Well, I think...
They all go off.
Those retail are off, but the entertainment and dining, they're still on, so I think we should allow them to have the outlet ID sign to stay on until a later time.
In a movie house, you get out at one o'clock in the morning, so the outlet sign's still on? I don't think so. I couldn't support that.
Movie will be really late.
You go to the late man, you know, the late night show, the three-hour movie that starts at nine o'clock, you get out at midnight or twelve-thirty, so the outlet signs still on?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I agree with you, Commissioner Brown, that that would be, that'd be a tough one to have the other lights on that late.
Keep it simple for code enforcement and everybody else. People across the freeway, they know where they're turning on, they know where they turn off.
Yeah, so just, we're all aware that what we're doing here is limiting the applicant's ability to put anything other than tenant, retail tenant signs along those seventeen positions, and that's their choice, okay?
But I don't think that's, I don't think that's necessarily the case. I think what we're doing is we're balancing all of the interests that we have to consider here, and we're stating that the illumination of the signs has a limited window regardless of what's on those signs.
I understand, but if it's a restaurant that's open until eleven...
They don't have an illuminated sign.
It's just their choice is not to...
Freeway illuminated.
Or put it there and turn it off.
They can still put it on a freeway-oriented elevation, but it needs to be turned off at nine, but interior, they can stay on.
Of course, yeah.
And we regulate that all the time. We just did it at the Ranch of San Clemente Tennis Club one month ago.
So one final...
When they turn on and when they turn off.
So one final, it sounds like we have consensus on the nine PM for the outlets and the identification sign, and now I just want to verify the hotel signs. Nine o'clock as well?
No, I think they're good for twenty-four hours. They're very, they're only, they're, all of them are small. Somebody at one o'clock in the morning's got to be able to find the hotel, I think. In my business life, I had to do that. Me too. All right, let's wrap this up. Let's get ready for a motion. Yeah. We have the language for it?
Do we have consensus on colors?
I think one color, keep it simple.
Well, we don't have consensus, but we have a majority to agree on the color. I'm okay with multiple colors. I'm okay with this color palette, the color palette, not include that, this is, we don't know. I'm okay with the color palette.
Hmm? All right, you want to get consensus on palette? Mr. Blackwell?
So we have a single color along freeway-oriented.
That's what staff's recommending, and they've recommended a color.
And the applicant wants more than one color to come to us. However, I can, I can change my opinion.
Okay, so we have a consensus of three out of four anyway, of one color on freeway-oriented signs.
Okay.
Okay? You can live with that.
Sure.
All right, let's get this wrapped up. Just entertain a motion with some language.
No, I have another item I'd like to talk, because at the beginning, I talked about whether they should have freeway-oriented sign informed by the color, but there are the amount and the maximum size, and that's some issue I want to continue to discuss.
Well, you still want to discuss size.
Right. The maximum tenant size, tenant size, sixty-four square feet. Design review has gone through extensive review of the proposed sign locations for each location. We basically refine them, and they are almost customized to each location, so to make sure that those signs fit the content, fit the design, all the building elevation. Some of them are bigger, some of them are smaller. There are some cases that's only thirty, the smallest one, I think it's thirty-two square feet plus minus. The big one, they're bigger, they're like a hundred-something square feet. But they, proportionally, they fit the elevation design, and I think the EIR, the draft supplementary environmental impact report also recognized that they don't cause any, they don't cause significant aesthetic issues. So I wonder why we propose, simplicity is maybe one reason, but I don't want to second guess, you know, why we want to impose one-size-fits-all sixty-four square feet size limit to any of them, because if a thirty-two becomes sixty-four, that sign will encroach into some architectural features.
Nope. Sixty-four is what's up there now.
Well, what staff's recommendation is, is a maximum of sixty-four. They can be less, and they can stick with the thirty-two as proposed because it does fit the elevation.
Maximum size.
So if it's less, and per their plan, if it's less than the sixty-four, they would be held to the less, but if anything was larger than that, they could not go larger than the sixty-four square feet.
Okay.
Just to clarify, sorry.
Okay, I get it. Okay, so we've discussed the size issue. Is everybody ready to close, close out? Do we have language we need for the condition number eleven? I'll do a, I'll do a reading here if you want to. Do we have a vote, a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'd like to move.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve resolution number PC 17-038, a resolution of the planning commission...
A motion of the City of San Clemente recommending that the City Council approve an amendment to the discretionary sign permit DSP 05-176, and sign exception permit 15-423, a request to amend a previously approved master sign program to allow freeway oriented signs for the outlets at San Clemente located at 101 West Avenue de Vista Hermosa, with a modification to condition 8. And that language was...
Was it 11, I think it was?
Oh, I'm sorry, condition 11, that currently reads illumination of all freeway oriented signs shall be turned off at the time of closure of each individual tenant, to be modified to read that the signage will be, lighting will be limited to 9:00 for the 17 freeway oriented signs.
And...
Turn on at sunset.
We'll turn on at, turn on at...
30 minutes after sunset.
30 minutes after sunset.
So just to clarify that, the illumination of all freeway oriented signs shall be turned off at 9:00 PM, with the exception of the hotel lighting, which shall be allowed to stay until, for 24 hours.
Correct.
Thank you.
Now, we also were offered a clarification by staff for condition 14. And so we need to read that at the record, I believe.
Okay, and also...
Basically just clarifies it, makes it more...
Yes, and also amending condition number 14, that reads this approval shall be limited to the following signs. A maximum of 17 freeway oriented signs shall be permitted. A maximum of 10 tenant signs shall be permitted within the 14 sign locations shown on the east elevation of the outlets at San Clemente Building facing the Interstate 5 freeway. Tenant signs shall be prohibited from the icon towers. A maximum of five freeway oriented hotel identification signs shall be permitted. Four freeway oriented outlet identification signs are permitted, one on the southeast elevation of the icon tower, and one on the northwest elevation of the icon tower at 100 square feet. Two outlet identification signs shall be permitted on the building north and east elevation at 200 square feet each.
That's per the plan?
Per plan.
Okay.
There was one word missing in that first sentence, and that's a maximum of 17 freeway oriented tenant signs. I just want to make that clarification.
All right. Have a motion, or have a second? Second by Tally, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. Good luck. With that, there is no new business, no old business, anything on a tentative future agenda. I think the tenant future agenda was discussed earlier this evening in study session at infinitum. With, that will make a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to the regular planning commission meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on December 20th, 2017, in council chambers at City Hall, located at 100 Avenue de Presidio, San Clemente, California, as the study session has been canceled.
Have a motion, motion in by Tally, second by Woo, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? None? Passes 4-0.
Shall we...
Thank you for your help tonight.
Shall we add a recommendation to the city council that to do the legal research on the color exceptions?
Done.
Done, yeah.
Adjourn.